City Council Special Meeting. It's a Joint City Council and Park Speeches and Recreation Commission Study Session of November 9th, Monday. Welcome, everyone. Can we have a call to order?
It's 6:02 PM and this is the call to order for the November 9th Joint Study Session of the City Council and Park Speeches and Recreation Commission. I'll go with the roll call, starting with Councilmember O'Neill. Councilmember Beer.
Here.
Councilmember Butterloss.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer.
Here.
Mayor Martin.
Here.
And for the Park Speeches and Recreation Commission, Commissioner Shoemaker.
Here.
Commissioner Marquetti.
Here.
Commissioner Knowles. We'll reflect that Commissioner Knowles is absent. Commissioner Kellogg.
Here.
Commissioner Haywood.
Here.
Chair Pro Tem Lusson. And he has not joined yet. Chair Abbott.
Okay, great. Thank you. Welcome, everyone. It's been a while since we've had a joint study session, so feel free to correct me if I am doing something wrong. Tonight, we're going to talk about the bike park.
Before we get started, do you want me to make a few announcements regarding the format of the meeting?
Yes, I do. Thank you.
This meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting by joining the Zoom link provided in the agenda or can be observed on local channel TV 26 or online at cityofpacifica.org/livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments may be made through participation via Zoom. For the members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish to speak on the agenda topic. Or *9, asterisk 9, if you're calling in and you will be called upon by either your screen name in Zoom or the last four digits of your phone number if you're calling in and recognized by the mayor to speak at the appropriate agenda topic time.
Thank you, Sarah. Okay, so tonight, we're going to receive a presentation from the Community Bike Park Committee and engage in discussion with Park Speeches and Recreation Commission and provide direction to the city manager and commission on next steps regarding the concept of a bike park in Pacifica. We will have council and commission questions and discussion followed by public comments and final council and commission comments. And I just want to say that an hour is probably not nearly enough time that we need to talk about this tonight, so let's all be kind and considerate and make sure that everybody has an opportunity to speak this evening. And I also just want to let everyone know that I'm going to be eating my dinner, so I'm going to stop my videos, so you don't have to witness that. But with that, I will hand it over to Director Mike Perez and Anthony Schreiber.
Good evening, councilmembers and Park Speeches and Recreation Commission members. I'll keep it really brief. I'll assume that you all read the staff report, but led just a quick introduction. About three years ago, staff were approached by some interested citizens, some of which are here and now on our Bike Park Committee here. They also came to several PBNR Commission meetings and City Council meetings to voice their support for a bike park in Pacifica. And at the 2019 Council Goal Setting Session, several citizens came forth to once again speak in support of the project and council agreed to add having a bike park study session to their 1920 work plan, which has also been continued now as part of the 2021 work plan. We have had them, the Bike Park Committee has come to two Park Speeches and Recreation Commission meetings to share ideas and plans and proposal, if you will, get some feedback from the commission, answer some questions, come back and do it again. And tonight, we're here for a little bit of presentation discussion as the mayor talked about earlier. And I would also just also recognize Recreation Coordinator Anthony Schreiber, who's with us. He's also been working with me as liaison to the Bike Park Committee. And before we have the committee do their presentation, they had submitted a link for a video that we thought would be a nice way to kind of show, give you a little bit of idea what a bike park is like. So if the city clerk would start the video, we're going to not watch the whole thing, but about five minutes or so. Okay? There's actually sound to the video, so it sounds like we're not getting that. Well, actually, so since we're not getting the sound, I'm going to ask Amir Mendel, who's here, on the call, he might be able to do a little bit of narration for your mirrors with the Bike Park Committee.
This is unfortunately the wrong video that we were hoping to show. So not the best representation necessarily of what we're trying to do here, but but this video can kind of give you an idea just generally of what we're looking to do, which is a place for the community to come and ride their bikes and
Not OSHA approved? This is the buffest I've ever seen.
Everything's hard. Crazy.
How hard?
Like 13 out of 4.
13 out of 4 hardness. Hardness.
Thank you.
So unfortunately, like I said, that's not the video we were attempting to show. But that's okay. The video that we wanted is in the agenda. And please, I encourage you to view it. It's called "A Dad's Guide to a Bike Park", and it shows. I hope everyone had a chance to watch it before the video, and that's really what we're trying to do. That video that you just saw is not necessarily a representation of what we're trying to do in this small space that we're trying to do it in.
Is there any way that we can pull that out? Can we just go to the agenda and pull it up? And some better
I think that would be great if we could do that. It's called "The Dad's Guide to a Bike Park". That's the video.
I'll try to locate that. Amir, did you want to begin with the PowerPoint presentation while I locate the the video or should I try to find the video?
No, I think that's fine. I think we can show the video at the end. In that case, we should just dive right in and then we can wrap it up with the video. Maybe that would be appropriate.
Right.
So hi, everyone. My name is Amir Mendel. I'm a lifelong Pacifica resident. I grew up here. I attended Ballomar Elementary School, Ternawa High School. I left briefly to attend college in Northern California, but have returned home and live in Ballomar. Myself and the rest of the committee who's here today, Matt McFail, please just raise your hand, Stephanie Phillips, and Sean Stack. We all represent the Pacifica Bike Park 501(c)(3), an organization here in town trying to build a bike park for the community. So a lovely shot of Pacifica here. Next slide, please. So the Bike Park as a committee and as an organization has made quite a bit of progress over the last couple of years. We have received Sarah, you can go and just click through them. There's six bullet points you can just perfect. We've received 501(c)(3) status from the federal government, and we've also received tax exemption from both the state of California and the federal government. And we've set up a bank account locally in town at US Bank in Eureka Square, where we can actually start putting our donations into a bank account. Of the people we surveyed, about 99.6 support building a bike park at the Lower Frontierland Park. We participated in several local events to spread awareness about the bike park and have tried to reach out to as many people in the community as possible. And we've also thoroughly researched all the different locations possible here in the city to do what we want to do. And we've come to the conclusion that I'll get to later in the presentation. Next slide, please, Sarah. So in order to gain perspectives of people in town and also outside of town, because obviously, we want people to come outside of Pacifica to use this park as well. We went to Fog Fest. We were there for the entire weekend, talking to the community and giving out surveys, having folks fill them out and speaking with them. We were at the PEPHathon in San Pedro Valley Park. Matt, who's the owner of Gearhead, has been taking surveys as people have come into his bike shop over the last several years. And to just gain some more outside perspective, we also attended the Fall Fiesta at the Facebook Campus. We just thought it was an event that would be useful in gathering some outside perspective here on the peninsula, which was actually very enlightening. Next slide, please. So our survey consisted of just some really brief questions. We didn't want to get, you know, too deep to deter people from filling it out. So are you a Pacifica resident? Yes or no? Would you support a bike park being built in the city of Pacifica? Would you be in support of a bike park being built at the vacant lot below Frontierland Park? And if Pacifica had a bike park, would you or someone in your family use it? And finally, how old you are? We wanted to kind of get an idea of how old our surveyors were. Next slide, please. So as you can see, we got a actually a pretty good Oh, would you go back, please, Sarah? There's one. Oh, back to to slide, perfect. We got a pretty good representation of folks in Pacifica and out. We got 81% of people who are residents and 19% that were not. 100% of the folks that filled out the surveys supported a bike park being built in Pacifica. Almost everyone supported the bike park being built at Lower Frontierland. And about 97% of folks said they would use it or a member of their family would use it. We did get a lot of older folks who said they wouldn't necessarily use it, but they know that their grandchildren or their children would use it. And this kind of gives a representation of the different age groups, which we were proud of. We feel like we kind of got a little bit of everyone. There are more folks under the age of 25 that filled out our survey, but as you can see, you know, folks over the age of 54 and down, we were able to really get a wide range of people's ages. So next slide, please, Sarah. And this is more demonstration of the survey results. As you can see, just, you know, overwhelming support of the folks that we did in fact survey. Next slide, please, Sarah. So the conclusion of the survey is, as I said, 100% of the survey participants support building a bike park in Pacifica. 99% of the folks supported being at Lower Frontierland, and 97% of them said that they would use it. So next slide, please, Sarah. So the topic of building a bike park in Pacifica has been on has been in discussion for a long time and many different locations have been thrown out. And we wanted to narrow it down to to what we thought was actually feasible. So we determined that the rifle range, which is located above the east side of Sharp Park Golf Course, so across the freeway, across the highway, above the eastern part of the golf course, that's where the old rifle range is. We also looked at Fairmont Park, which is on Parkview Circle Drive, Parkview Circle in the Fairmont neighborhood, and then Lower Frontierland, which is the lot in between Oddstad School and Frontierland proper, which is the park that we all know as Frontierland. There is, if you go down the hill on Yosemite, on your right-hand side in the trees, there is the piece of land that we're describing.
So it's the piece of land between where the kids play soccer and the upper area where the playground is?
That's correct.
That kind of hidden area?
Correct. And there is that bathroom, the chained-up bathroom. That's exactly what we're talking about right there. Yeah.
You really have to hunt for it. For those who haven't been there, you really have to go kind of searching back there.
And in my presentation, we're going to get to a little bit of a map. And for those who don't know exactly where it is, I can point it out directly on that map. So hopefully, that will be helpful as we move along here. We went into a much more detailed pros and cons list with the Parks Commission. We're not going to do that tonight. We've really exhausted the possibilities and narrowed it down. So we don't want to focus too much on those other locations because we've really exhausted those other locations. So I will briefly go over those as we move on here. But Lower Frontierland is the most viable option for what we want to do for the city. Next slide, please, Sarah. So here's Fairmont Park. Just briefly, big pro, it's already a park. So it would be a great addition to that, but a couple of big challenges that, you know, we couldn't really overcome. One, the limited parking and the overflow that it would happen in that neighborhood. There's not that many parking spaces. And, you know, if I was a resident there, that would be a big challenge is having, you know, tons and tons of cars in your neighborhood. So we're limited on space as well. A lot of that green field space is being used. I mean, it's for picnics and people running around and it's being used. So that was a big, that was a big con for us. And this again is located on Circle or Parkview Circle in the Fairmont neighborhood for those who have not been there before. Next slide, please, Sarah. The Sharp Park Rifle Range. This was actually the number one location. We think this would still be the best location to do what we really want to do and really do the most expansive version of what we want to do. But the big con is the city of Pacifica does not own it. The city of San Francisco owns it. And two, it used to be a rifle range, and it was never mitigated for all the lead contaminants. It was capped, but never to be built on or done anything until it's completely mitigated. And that would cost a lot of money to do. And quite frankly, it's not owned by the city, and we want to work with the city of Pacifica on a project, not the city of San Francisco necessarily. So unfortunately, it's a beautiful piece of property that is going to go probably unused for a long time, but for those reasons, it's just not a viable option for what we want to do. And that brings us to the next slide, Sarah, please, to Lower Frontierland. So here are some photos of what the piece of property we're talking about. It's a relatively small, flat piece of land, as we described, just below Main Frontierland. And that bottom right photo, you can see that there's Oddstad School, and then right above the hill is the lot we're talking about. And then if you go up a little bit higher, and that's Fairmont Park proper that everyone knows. And it's kind of nestled in the trees as Mayor Martin described. Next slide, please, Sarah. So some big pros and cons for Lower Frontierland. Let's go with, let's start with the cons. So it's not centrally located. We, as we looked for locations, we understood that we wanted to find something that was centrally located to the entire city. I mean, our city is long, it's not deep. So ideally, something like the rifle range may have been a better fit for that, but it's not necessarily a reason not to do it. So unfortunate, yes, but there are new bike paths going down Lindemar Boulevard, headed that direction. San Pedro Valley Park is right there. The Boys and Girls Club is right down the street. So there's also arguments in Ternawa High School, other arguments in the other direction as well. It may need some infrastructure. We understand that there may need to be a new bathroom put in. We understand that there may need to be some ADA compatibility. There could be some infrastructure issues, but we think that it's doable. The bathrooms are there, but they most likely need a ton of work. I spoke with Mike this week, and he said even in his entire time, he's never seen them working. So we know from talking with City Works that the pipes work. I mean, everything should theoretically be infrastructure is there, but the physical bathroom is incredibly outdated. But one of the big pros is part of an existing park. It's not a new, it's not a new thing in a new part of the city. It's in addition to something that already exists, which we feel like is a huge pro to what we want to do. It just makes one of our best parks even better. It does have the infrastructure for bathrooms. Even if we need to put new ones there, the infrastructure is there, which is huge. It's approximately 45,000 square feet, which is for us, you know, we'd like more space to do what we want to do, but it's absolutely enough to provide the community with an awesome bike park. The public transit, and like I described, the bike paths do lead back there, and there are ways to get to that area of the city. There is newly paved parking lot at Upper Frontierland, and there is a lot more space to deal with overflow parking in general than, for example, the Fairmont Park. And one great thing that the mayor described is actually, it's pretty nestled back. So obviously, the neighbors there are already used to having a park and kids, you know, playing and whatnot, but it's so nestled back in the trees that the noise actually is muffled quite a bit from it being all the way back there. So it's tucked away. It's not, you know, just in sight from the road, which can be a positive. The Boys and Girls Club is right down the road, as I mentioned, Ternawa High School. So it is in range for our children to be able to access it. And something I'll briefly get into is that there's potential for expansion. I mean, the city does own maybe more than everyone here understands, and there are potential for doing more once we accomplish this first project, which I'll get into. Next slide, please. So this is a map of, oh, go back one, Sarah, please. Perfect. This is a map of the area. And as you can see, where it says Frontierland Park is what the city owns there. And that actually encompasses the hillside all the way around it. And we just see, you know, if this goes really well, this is not what we're talking about tonight, but just keep in mind that there is potential for doing more, maybe hiking trails or biking trails or just something more to even make the Frontierland Park an even better park for Pacifica. But this just kind of shows what the city actually owns and what it doesn't own. So everyone can kind of have an idea of the landscape. Next slide, please, Sarah. So maintenance. I know this is a big question that has come up over the years while this has been discussed. And quite frankly, the biggest thing we want to do to tackle that question is most folks that are building bike parks now have also ran into the same issue. And the way that it's built can help bring down not only the maintenance cost, but really the need for maintenance altogether. There's always going to be something, but by using asphalt and wooden and composite features, which I'll get to in a later slide, so you can see what I'm talking about, it'll be more like the skate park, where yes, there's maintenance in the sense that people need to go pick up trash. If something is vandalized, things like that will need to be attended to. But the day-to-day, our goal is to have as little bike tires on dirt as possible. Dirt deteriorates. Asphalt does not deteriorate nearly at the same rate. So very important to keep in mind that our goal is to not make this, one, a city responsibility to maintain the jumps and the berms, and that's not our goal here. And two, is not to have something that's completely volunteer-based, where we have to rely on the folks here in this committee for the next 25 years to maintain it. Our goal is to make it self-sustainable with the materials used. And that's what a lot of folks are doing now in building bike parks around the country. And by the way, we don't have the answers to all these questions until we really figure out the design. And so we have and will continue to work on surveying other park operators about the type of maintenance they incur and what it costs and things of that nature. But ultimately, the goal is to make it as low maintenance as possible and use as little dirt as possible. Next slide, please, Sarah.
I just have a full of time, Amir, because we do have a bunch of attendees. So if you want to just kind of speed it up a little bit, we want to make sure we get the opportunity to talk.
No problem. Here are some examples of what we're talking about. Top left is an asphalt pump track. This is what we're looking to primarily do. And on the top right, you're going to see wood lips with some dirt landings. And so that's just an idea of trying to limit the amount of dirt. Next slide, please, Sarah. The cost, we estimate that the cost will be around $750,000. This is an incredibly conservative number that also incorporates all the infrastructure I described, a possible gate, a new bathroom, ADA compatibility. The bike park itself, again, conservative, we think will cost about $500,000. We are not looking to the city of Pacifica to pay for this project. Our goal is to explore grants, fundraise, and look for corporate sponsorship with bike companies and whatnot to help support this project. We are not looking for the city to foot the bill here. If there's anything the city can contribute, fantastic. If not, our goal is to build this using our own fundraising dollars, which is why we set up the 501(c)(3). We base these projections off of other bike parks in California and in the area. Next slide, please. As we all know, Pacifica does not have big tech companies coming here and, you know, a ton of businesses. What we do have is our greatest resources, our outdoors, our beach, our parks, our beautiful hiking trails. And this is just another great addition to what we already have to offer and the perfect place for kids and families to gather and spend quality time together. Next slide, please. And here's a photo of us at the Fog Fest as a group. So I'll hand it over to Mike from here.
And this is the last slide. But right now, next steps would include looking for input regarding a recommendation of Lower Frontierland Park as a preferred location in order to pursue funding and evaluation steps and just further define the project. And several questions that were also included in the staff report, which won't be all the questions, of course, but these are some of the main ones, would be designing, construction costs, maintenance costs, and operational considerations. And I know Amir talked about those, but, you know, when you get down to the nitty-gritty, those could change, as we all know, and they're just estimates now. Environmental impacts and addressing potential concerns from the neighbors. So with that, I will turn it back over to the mayor.
That was an amazing presentation. Thanks for answering all of our questions, mostly that we would have had. I'm going to turn it over to anybody on the commission or council that has any questions before we open it up to the public. Does anyone have anything right off the bat? You can sort of signal like this. I think I can see almost everyone. Cindy Abbott.
Hi, thanks for that presentation, Amir. It's great to see how you've been continuing to proceed. I've been following the progress of the proposed, looks like moving forward pump track down at the Corre Park in El Granada that's being developed by Samatéo County Parks. So I'm wondering, so they're dealing with some of the exact same questions that we deal with things here. It sounds like a mirror of us, you know, concerns from the neighbors, parking. You know, concerns from the neighbors, parking, trash, things like that. And one of their conversations has been about who would be using this park. And right now, they're looking at a focus as a community, family oriented park versus marketing it as a large regional draw. So I'm wondering about your thoughts on that. Who do you see as the attendees which might be helpful to know for the community and neighbors there?
Sure. Great question. I think that those two ideas are not necessarily mutually exclusive. By no means are we going to be building a park that is like the X Games and 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 having these insane events that are gonna, you know, overwhelm the community. What I what I meant by folks coming from out of town is just like folks coming to the beach or going on a hike in San Pedro Valley Park. We see this park being used by all age groups all the way from kids on push bikes without even pedals on it, all the way to older folks, you know, in their, you know, fifties and sixties. We are not, our goal is not to build necessarily a national draw. The space, quite frankly, isn't conducive to that. We're going to do as much as we can with the space we have, but we also see as a big pro, having a great bike park, just like having a great beach, bringing people in, but not necessarily being this out of control draw. So I think it's a really important question, though, and and just the the size of it in general is is not conducive to to what you're describing, so.
Any other council members or commissioners have any questions? Mayor Proton Beckmeyer.
Thank you for a really great presentation. The last time that I heard an update on this was pre-COVID. At the PBNR meeting, that was at Council Chambers. It was like a year ago or something, more than that. I don't know. And I know that a lot of work has been going on, so I appreciate that very much. With regard to your outreach, have you presented this concept at PTO meetings in our schools in Pacifica?
No, we have not done that. Unfortunately, a lot of the plans we had for this year, just like many others, were curbed by COVID-19. There's a lot of things we've been wanting to do. Events, reaching out to neighbors, speaking with, like you said, PT, the parent teacher organization. COVID has made things very challenging for us to do outreach in general, but we have a lot of things. Yeah, but there are, but it's on our minds. It's on our minds.
Okay, my next question has to do with, well, actually on that same topic, but it really is for city staff around the concept of using flash vote as a way of of testing the concept and broadening the concept further. And I realize we haven't really implemented flash vote all the way yet, but I just want to put that out there as a marker. My my other question, though, does have to do with the neighborhood and has to do with parking. So frankly, when I looked at your pictures, I thought Fairmont was, wow, look at all that parking. And your presentation said, oh, no, parking is a disaster. And when I looked at the possibilities for Frontierland, I'm not seeing where the parking is. So can you help me understand that part more?
Sure. I think though there are more, there are quite a few parking spaces at the Fairmont Park, the issue is the overflow. Once you occupy all the spots there, if you look at the photo, there's nowhere for them to go but park in front of people's homes. The biggest difference at Frontierland is Yosemite Drive down one way, there are no homes directly in front of those. And I know if I lived there, I wouldn't want people parking nonstop in front, directly in front of my home. So there's just more space for overflow in general at Frontierland, and there are quite a few parking spaces in Frontierland proper that I go very often with my wife and there are always spaces at Frontierland Park. We don't ever have an issue parking, so. Nothing's ideal. Nothing's ideal. I wish there was more, but you know.
Even even at the height of soccer season, you can find a spot on the street. My experience. Anyone else before we open it up to the public? Sue Varlos?
My question was about, have you contacted San Francisco? Because that's such a bigger site. I know it would require cleanup, but they should be cleaning it up anyway. So did you talk to them about this? Because it is a recreational zoning there.
Sue, yes, we did. We did reach out to the city of San Francisco and the information we got from them was unfortunately, is what I said in my presentation, which was they capped the the lead contaminants, but they didn't mitigate the problem, meaning they didn't actually remove the contaminants out of the land. So we contacted them, but there was really no, there was no interest on their part to pay to mitigate the lead. I agree with you. Unfortunately, they left us with a piece of property that's almost unusable. And in a perfect world, that was our number one location because it hits almost every mark, but.
Yeah, there are no neighbors. It's perfect.
It's perfect, but again, you know, even, but Sue, the the money also is, can't be ignored. I mean, what we're trying to fundraise is going to be a challenge and we're gonna, we're gonna work very hard to make that happen, but to do that on top of paying to mitigate it, it would be, it would be, I think, essentially a reason not to do it or probably would never happen, so.
Yeah, no, I was thinking, go mitigate it, so.
Trust me that we've we've had many discussions about that very topic.
Okay. Can you guys hear me?
Kevin raised his hand, too.
Yeah, I had a quick question with the asphalt. I understand that it's more durable unless maintenance. But I haven't, I haven't really, I've been to a couple of parks, but I don't think I've seen any ones with asphalt. Is there more of a an injury risk or safety concern using asphalt compared to dirt?
I don't have any data in front of me, but as a lifelong mountain biker, you know, there is going to be risk, whether it's dirt or asphalt, whether or not it's it's more, I'm not sure. Dirt also isn't necessarily fun to fall on. But, you know, the skate park as well, same idea. We are going to encourage folks to wear helmets, safety equipment. It's going to be mandatory, so.
Yeah, my my only concern is like, say, like, you know, I have like a four-year-old and a six-year-old and I'd rather them learning on a pump track on dirt versus asphalt. You know, they're not, you know, riders like us, it's going to feel the same because you're gonna hit hard regardless, but injuries that you're gonna get from a four and six-year-old running a pump track is is like those road rashes type things that you don't get dirt, but you get from asphalt. So I'm wondering, like, if you're doing like the smaller pump tracks for the beginner riders, are you looking at pump tracks made out of dirt or is everything going to be asphalt?
Well, we want a combination, like I said earlier in the presentation, of asphalt, which has gained a lot of popularity, at least in the state of California for folks building pump track, where I used to live in Humboldt County. They just built one in Fortuna. And what we want to avoid is what happened in Fortuna, which is about twenty years ago, a group of really passionate locals built a bike park and it was awesome, but it was all dirt. And as the volunteer base fell out, it deteriorated. And it got to the point where maintenance wasn't a nightmare. So in a perfect world, like in Truckee, they have a lot of dirt, but they also have a huge volunteer base and they rely on that. The asphalt and the composite materials like wood and other materials is a way to to curb that. So, you know, in a perfect world, it would probably be more dirt, but at the same time, we want to make this work and make it feasible on a maintenance level, so.
I'll chime in on that. So with asphalt, you've got a a surface that's always the same. You're not worried about erosion. The, you'll never lose traction because, because the surface changed. In my opinion, it's safer in most, for most things. There is the possibility of doing a smaller, like standalone, super little kid one. But I grew up skating and riding an asphalt skate park and you never had to worry about cracks, you know, rocks popping up, that sort of thing. I think it's a better option.
It's a good point. Thank you, Matt.
Anyone else? James?
Yeah, I just with that, like, like Matt was just saying, with the, with dirt, you're not going to have as good attraction as, it's not going to be consistent. So asphalt would be probably better. But the other comment was that the requirement of wearing pads and helmets and stuff, we can't even get the kids to wear helmets at the skate park. I go to the skate park all the time and there's twelve-year-old kids that know helmets, so I don't know, but.
But we're going to encourage it regardless. I understand. Yeah, same idea, though. I know, you know, it's not perfect, but, you know, we're obviously going to encourage folks to wear their safety equipment, especially small kids who are being supervised by their parents, so.
I'm gonna be, I know if we build this thing, me and my entire family are going to go rage on that thing and I'll be wearing a helmet.
Good, that's what we like to hear.
Oh, who else? Anyone? Before we open it up to the public, we've got about twenty attendees out there in the public. Maybe a couple repeats. So is that okay if I open it up? Yep. All right. So we will open up to the public. Now would be the time to raise your hand. Use raised hand function. If you're on your phone, hit star nine. I think we should probably cut it to two minutes per person, given the time, and then we have to come back to commission and council, if everyone's okay with that. Can I get a nod of the head that everyone agrees that two minutes is okay? Okay, great. Thank you. All right, we got one. Well, raise your hand right now if you want to talk. All right, they're coming in now. Okay. I'm gonna feel bad if we cut it to two minutes and nobody wants to talk. Okay, we can go ahead and get started.
Martin, council members and commissioners, I'm Elizabeth Brooks, deputy city clerk. Our first speaker tonight is Tiger Jazz Big Stick. Please state your name for the record.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council. I am Tiger Jazz Twirl's Big Stick of Pacifica. And I am really impressed by all the effort and thought that's been put into this presentation and finding a location that's as equitable as possible. And I've really enjoyed at meetings in the past, listening to all the passion going into this bike park project. And I just want to encourage you all to help it to its next steps, because I think this will be a beautiful asset to our community. And it looks like a lot of really good thought and love is being put into it and I'm all in favor of it. Thank you.
Thanks, Tiger.
Our next speaker is Jennifer Brahm. Please state your name for the record.
My name is Jennifer Brahm. I have two kids in Pacifica, Pacifica residents, eight-year-old and a nine-year-old. They really enjoy bicycling and I would love where they could safely practice their skills, be outdoors, hang out with their friends in a safe environment. And thank you for considering this project. I would love to see this fruition and I'm gonna be helping and I'm actually been reaching out to the schools, the Ocean Show School in particular to get more people. Everybody's very excited. I think this would be an amazing addition to Pacifica. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Okay, we have a bunch more attendees. Anybody wants to talk? Now's the time to raise your hand. We got another one.
Matthew Walters, your next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Sorry, I was just speaking to mute then. For the record, name's Matt Walters, live here in in Pacifica. I would say it's, it would be a thoroughly great idea to to see this in in the community here. I've I've been lucky enough to to see a few bike parks and pump tracks in my time and I think, you know, they're thoroughly enjoyable for all ages from little kids on strider bikes to, well, grownups like me that can can fall off with the best of them. And I think it would be a great addition to the community.
Thanks, Matthew.
Next, we'll hear from Jill. Please state your full name for the record.
Jill, you're on.
I'm sorry, can you hear me now?
Yes.
My name is Jill Byoni. Good evening. I'm not speaking tonight because I oppose a bike park for our city. My concern is the location being considered. Quite simply, Lower Frontierland is currently being enjoyed and appreciated and has been for many years by many Pacifica residents, including myself, on a daily basis. Lower Frontierland is isolated. Its location is obscured by many trees and bushes. It's not visible from the street. The land is essentially hidden and unfortunately, a high fire risk as our state is in a perpetual drought. Such a remote spot for activity which will draw a young population, I believe is asking for trouble. And I was curious if the area next to Gearhead and next to the library or behind the library has been considered as a location. Thank you for listening.
Thanks, Jill. Anyone else have any, anyone else that is attending this meeting from the public have any questions or comments really, but if you ask a question, we'll do our best to answer it. So now's the time to raise your hand. Otherwise, I'm going to close public comments. I don't see any more hands raised. Okay, I will close public comments then, and we will come back to commission and council. Anyone have any immediate discussion points? I would actually like to, you know, ask Amir, maybe if you could make a comment on the location that was just brought up behind Sanchez Library.
Yes, so I wanted to address that, too. Thank you, Mayor Martin. So we we did look at it and unfortunately, fortunately, the city is going to be building a senior center from our understanding in that area and we're not quite sure how far back it's going to be going. But that, the the amount of usable land is going to shrink dramatically. There's also a creek that runs back there that we feel might run into environmental impact issues as well. So it's a combination of those two things that that we felt deemed it not usable for what we want to do.
Thanks, Amir. James?
Regarding the last person's comments, I actually have been to Lower Frontierland on a number of occasions and I have seen members of the community down there. A couple, I'm not saying that, I mean, I'm sure that people like to walk around back there, but there's an entire track to walk around Upper Frontierland. I mean, there's a huge place to walk and, you know, utilize there. I I've not I just, I I read that that person's letter and I just, I just kind of felt that was that's kind of a non-issue. There's plenty of room for people to walk around if they want to.
Cindy Abbott.
I really appreciated Mayor Proton's idea and we brought this up and it was held off until having this meeting, that doing a broader city polling about it. I I think that that would be really helpful, using whatever tools are out there available through the city to gather additional information and support or concerns about the project so that they can be addressed. I do know over the years, as we were working on the dog park, that that was a location for a proposed off-leash dog park. Over the years, it has been considered for other projects as well, including an amphitheater. So I think it would be great to have a, you know, a refreshed survey, particularly focused on the neighborhood if the city council thinks that that is a potential good location. And I know the team has held off on that until this this meeting tonight.
James?
Yeah.
James, can I, can we go to Mary real quick for you?
Oh, yeah, for sure. Go ahead.
Hey, thanks, James. Appreciate it. For one thing, I just want to say thank you to all of you with the bike park group. You know, you guys have hung in there through COVID. I think that eight hundred surveys is an incredible amount of information to collect, so kudos for that. I think that Lower Frontierland Park is a really good location, and so I would support that. Really, I just want to say thank you for all of your work, because I know how hard you guys have been. Really, I just want to say thank you for all of your work cuz I know how hard you guys have been working and um, yeah, it's gonna be a great addition to our, to our city at some point.
Uh, James?
Yeah, uh, my wife uh, drew my attention to a a uh, topic of conversation on Nextdoor in the last couple days regarding this issue. If you guys just wanna check out, you know, see what other members of the community think about it. Uh, it seems like it's overwhelming overwhelmingly in favor of a bike park. That's it.
Mike O'Neil?
Uh, yeah, um, well, I I think there's, there's two issues, like lots of stuff in Pacifica is that everybody loves the bike park, okay, but then you get into the location. Um, I fully support the bike park. I say go for it, get the money, etc. Okay, I was a recreation major and I know how good it is for family time and stuff for the kids to be out and active and etc. I am concerned about the site though because it is, as the one speaker said, long and narrow. I am concerned that it would become kind of an attractive nuisance because I have gotten emails that since COVID has happened, Frontierland Park has been closed. Teenagers going up there kinda partying and the police have had to be called several times. And so I am concerned about it becoming an attractive nuisance, you know, at night, not so much with the kids riding bikes and all that. Um, I would, I kinda like the idea of Sanchez cuz I don't think we had visions of it being a senior center. I think it was recreation and park programs. So it would be a nice, if you had it down there at the Sanchez Library area, you would be able to have, mom could have the little toddlers you know, in there at storytime, so keep an eye out on the kids that might wanna be on the bike park. Um, so I am concerned the parking, there is parking down at Sanchez. Um, there's the park mall area as well as the street and um, the library area. And I'm just concerned about the security maintenance, I think, may be an issue going in there because I, it's been a while since I've been to that location, but I don't know if you could exactly fit a pickup truck down there to go pick up the garbage cans and stuff and how hauling it out. So I'm a little bit concerned about the operations of that. I mean, ideally, if we could get the rifle range, I'd be all for that. But I understand the issues there. So that's my thoughts is fully support the bike park. I also, I do have an issue kind of it being so far back. When I looked at the route map for Sam Trans, um, the it go, it the the Route fourteen makes a right at Terranova and it's a fairly, you know, good haul to get up to um, Frontierland and Oddstad School and stuff like that from there. So that's my thought. Fully support the fi- bike park. I'm just kinda concerned about the location. And I'd like to see if we could look at um, Sanchez a little bit more cuz I think it would open it up to the kids that are back on Rosita. Um, back up above, up above Ortega and stuff. I think it's just kinda too, so far back in Pacific that it's an issue.
Mike, if I could respond just briefly to to the size, um, well, let's, you know, if you guys are, if the city's not planning on building what what my understanding was, even what's there and if they were to expand at all, they being the city, the spaces is very, very small and front, Lower Frontierland in and of itself is already a pretty small space for what we want to do, but it's doable. Sanchez for what we have in mind would be, would be a big challenge um, to really provide um, what we want to for 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 the kids and for the community. So I think you're right that that's, that that's a con of Lower Frontierland is the location, but um, you know, unfortunately, we've looked at, we just looked at everything and 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 we still feel like that is um, the number one uh, spot, but your, but your concerns are definitely well taken, so.
I chime in on the uh, another aspect of it. Once it's built, there's gonna be room for a fire truck to go in there and turn around and come back out. Um, it's gonna be more easily patrolled by the police once it's done. Um, it'll actually be an area that will most likely have a fence and a gate and easy access to a police cruiser to go in, spotlight the whole place and come right back out again.
Will there, do you envision parking um, on-site, so to speak? Not the Frontierland Park parking, but is that area big enough to have its own parking lot kinda thing?
That's something we've discussed. We'd prefer to not, but there's definitely room to put some parking within that space.
We feel like especially for ADA compatibility that there are issues we're gonna have to address in terms of parking, so yes, but in terms of utilizing that space as a full-on parking lot, you know, we can kinda cross that bridge, but we know that there's infrastructure work to be done to make it viable. We're, and that's why we built that into the cost. Um, a lot of the cost is infrastructure, um, so.
Mayor Martin, I just wanted to interject with the time check. We're at six fifty-five right now.
Yes, thank you very much. And i- if um, if the commission and the council will allow, um, I'd like to uh, give my comments. Um, I I think this is a terrific proposal. I think that you cover, I think eight hundred surveys uh, is a lot, even for the city of Pacifica. And I um, I would encourage you to to team up with the city to do the flash vote and and reach a wider audience. I think um, Lower Frontierland is the perfect spot. If ev- if anyone on this uh, call has not been back there recently, you will, you will be in awe at what an underutilized little space that is. And if I lived in that neighborhood, I certainly wouldn't wanna lose it either. But I think that the joy that it will bring to this community will outweigh some of the uh, uncomfortableness that people may have with not being able to walk their dogs there or um, just sort of losing that as an open space, but we have this open space and we, there's so much open space right there. It it's, it's quite amazing actually how much there is not being used. And I can tell you, I spent a lot of time back there with my little one who didn't play soccer while the other one played soccer, so. Um, and yeah, we heard lots of complaints, but the more that space is used, the less complaints I think you'll have because the more it will be used. It's sort of a cir- circular um, i- issue, you know. Good challenge to have. That's sort of my thought here. And um, I think you have put together a very concise and very um, uh, well-thought-out plan and and I, and I think one of the things that I would just recommend, and I know that if you stay close to Parks, Beaches and Recreation, you will always consider equity as part of this project and access issues. I wouldn't want it to become a sort of an exclusive area for Pacificans only um, that nobody, that other folks wouldn't feel comfortable coming and using. Um, I know sometimes I feel that way as a surfer going into unusual spots, you know, you wanna feel that sense of welcome and and that this is accessible to all. Uh, I do think that um, you know, the the bus route is a, is a tricky one. Um, we're gonna get there. Transportation's very, very up in the air as it is these days. Uh, but we got more kids home these days, so they need more space. Um, and um, we have just about two minutes left for this discussion and we have to come together. Um, I'm gonna ask Amir and Stephanie and Matt and Sean to sort of just sort of sit back for a minute and listen um, uh, t- to the commission and the council uh, to try to come together with um, a general consensus on if this sounds like a good uh, location, right? And um, and and any sort of more information that you'd like to see come, come to the next um, point of discussion, which would probably go back to uh, PBNR Commission, if I'm not mistaken. Mary, do you have something?
Um, yeah, I I think it's a good location, so I'm in favor of the of the location. I think flash vote is a really good idea. And as far as the nuisance comment goes, Frontierland Park has always been a nuisance for our young people, including, so.
Yeah, duh.
Uh, Gail?
Um, I, since the last study session with the commission, went to visit the space and I've lived in town over thirty-one years and never been there. And so I think the comment about it being underutilized is accurate. Um, I think more people in the city would be using that space and children now really need to get away from screen time and get out in nature and this would reach a lot of children, so I'm, I'm supportive of that. I I am also, I asked the question during the last study session about removal of trees and learned that none of the trees in the area need to be removed. I think um, that sounds like a good idea.
So most everyone except um, Commissioner Marquetti really uh, said a whole lot, if that's okay, that's still okay. Uh, Mark, um, but sort of can we do a a show of hands with those that are happy with this location and um, and would encourage flash votes for a additional survey? Um, and uh, and and then make the recommendation to to go back to PBNR for sort of next steps in development of of where this needs to go? Okay, uh, that looks like we've got a a a consensus. And um, Director Perez and um, Recreation Coordinator Shriver, do you feel like you have enough information from this meeting to go forth and do good things?
Yes, I think we do. Uh, I feel good about that. I think that the commission has uh, good understanding. Um, and they've spent some time on this. Uh, and as you saw, the committee is is very uh, well-prepared. Um, and I think uh, we realize this is not something that will happen overnight, but we're in it for the long haul. So yes, we we're, we're prepared to move forward.
Okay.
Just to echo what Mike was saying, most definitely. And so whatever, whatever questions you all have, uh, please, I mean, you'd be more than happy to address those.
Is there any plans for it to be lit at night or is it just daytime use only?
Daytime use only.
Suvarlas?
I just wanna say I'm always the show me the money person, so, um, and thank you for explaining that because that's always my biggest concern. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Subakmar?
Real quickly, on that note, I would say the next time I um, hear about this, I would love to see a pro forma on those numbers and and why those are right because it just, my gut tells me it's low, not impossible, but low. And I also wanna echo Councilmember Vatterlos's statements about the rifle range. I'm not giving up on that. That's a big lift, but I am not giving up on that, just saying.
Okay, well, uh, thank you all very much. I appreciate your conciseness. I appreciate your sticking to the topic. Felipe, I'm sorry you joined too late and we didn't get to your comments, so uh, thank you all. And for those, we do have a regular council meeting right after this, but uh, Clerk Coffee, I'm gonna ask for two minutes uh, for a break and I'll see everyone else back in two minutes. Uh, except.
Can I just chime in? Just one, one last thing. It, I encourage everyone to watch the video that was in the agenda if you haven't. I just think that it will give everyone a really good idea of what we're trying to do, so I apologize for the snafu in the beginning, but please watch the video and thank you everyone for your time. We really appreciate it.
Guys, thank you so much.
Thank you. We need adjourned seven oh three PM.
Thank you, everyone.
Coffee, are we ready with PCT?
Yeah.
Welcome to the City of Pacifica City Council meeting, a regular meeting of November ninth. It is seven oh seven PM. And can we have, I will call this a meeting to order and can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Here.
Councilmember Beer?
Here.
Councilmember Vatterlos?
Here.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Here.
Mayor Martin?
Here.
All council members are present and I will just make a note about the meeting format for tonight. Uh, this meeting, the city council meeting is being held by video conference with no physical location open to the public. The public can observe and participate in the meeting via the Zoom link provided in the agenda or by phone to the dial-in number and webinar ID provided in the agenda. The meeting may also be observed live on local TV channel twenty-six or online at cityofpacifica.org backslash livestream. For this meeting, live verbal public comments will, may be made through participation by Zoom. For members of the public participating via Zoom, use the raise hand button to indicate that you wish, wish to speak on an agenda topic or during oral communications when the mayor calls upon that agenda item. For those participating by phone, use star nine or asterisk nine to raise your hand to request to speak. The city clerk will call upon speakers at the appropriate time. Uh, by your screen name or the last four digits of your phone number, please state your full name clearly uh, for the record at the start of your public comment. Written and email public comments will not be read during the meeting, but will be made part of the written record and were provided to council members if received before uh, four PM today. The format of this meeting may be altered or the meeting may be canceled if needed. You may check the status at www.cityofpacifica.org for any updates.
Okay, thank you, Clerk Coffee. We will have a salute to the flag this evening led by local veterans from American Legion Post two thirty-eight. Uh, this evening's video features uh, local veterans Wayne Dolan, Roger Massio, Greg Freeman, Vern Alonso with Greg Stefanenko uh, taking the video. And we will now have that video shared. Thank you all for your service.
Please join me in reciting the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty, justice for all. Order, arms!
Thank you very much. Okay, we will have a special presentation this evening by uh, Pacifica's Veterans Memorial Group. Mike Jalinski?
He's on mute. I don't think he knows he's on mute.
Sarah, can you unmute?
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, you can't even see me. Good. Alright, hey, I'm a little, I'm technically challenged. Nonetheless, thank you very much for the opportunity to present um, our group's project to the city council. And as you can see from the slide, the the idea for our veterans memorial um, for citizens of the city of Pacifica came, came about at a class reunion last year, which was in Nix in October. And the way it started was we had a memorial board for our classmates who had, who were deceased and there were forty-six of them. And as we got to talking, we, we had, we found that we had two classmates who had um, died in Vietnam. We had um, brothers of two of our classmates who had died in Vietnam. Um, a brother of one of our sister. A gal, her brother was killed in Vietnam and one um, and another one woman had two cousins who were killed in Vietnam, so we had a total of seven. So we um, decided to take on the project to establish a permanent memorial or listing the names of people who had been, been killed in Vietnam and expand that to any Pacifican who had died in the service to our country in a war zone since the city had been incorporated in nineteen fifty-seven. So if you can turn to the next slide, this is what um, the memorial is, it looks like in its almost completed stage. We got together four, four classmates, Rich Jasso. We got together four classmates, Rich Jasso, myself, Bob Peterson and Patty Hawker, who were all kind of a high school class of 69. And we formed the group. We formed a partnership with the American Legion who fiscally sponsored us and also agreed to donate land where we could place the memorial. And we set out about fundraising and selected a company to help us design and construct a memorial, which you see now, it's the B Fontana Company out of Colma, California. And we spread word of mouth and also contacted surviving family members. And that got us contributions were about 70% of our goal, 70, 75% of our goal. And we've gotten some publicity articles written by Jean Bartlett, a biography of each of the names you see there to provide some background of who they are. And that is brought about contacts from family members, friends. And we're getting a lot of positive feedback to the fact that we're doing this. We had hoped to dedicate this memorial on Veterans Day of this year, but it was prevented by COVID. So right now, we're kind of in limbo as to when we might dedicate it. But we're, the COVID dependent, we're looking at perhaps March 29th, which is Vietnam Veterans Memorial Day or Memorial Day or sometime afterward. With this COVID, we all have to be quite flexible. And you'll see there's also one, one deceased veteran from the Iraq War, graduated Terranova High School. And we found that person's name through the monument maker. His daughter, the monument maker, Mark Fontana's daughter works for him and went to Terranova and knew of Angelo and his service and his death. And we were able to get his name added to the memorial. And you see the front side there has the emblems of all the five armed services. On the backside, there's a narrative about contributions to building and the city of Pacifica. And a special thank you to the American Legion and VFW who sponsored this project and provided us a location for it. So if we can put the last slide up, this is the Unashamed commercial pitch. But if I could just put that up, we're still looking, still looking for funds and doing it through GoFundMe and also by checks sent direct to the American Legion. And those checks will be all dedicated for the memorial. So that ends my short presentation. And does anyone have any questions?
No, I don't have any questions, but thank you so much. I know I had the opportunity to meet some of your group and talk at length about the project. So it looks really beautiful and I look forward to it opening up.
Thank you, Marie.
Suvaras?
I totally agree. It's, it's something that we really needed here because it's important to recognize all those people. So thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your efforts. It is good. And I think you actually have, I've gone to the memorial up at Chapel by the Sea for several years. And I think you actually have more names than they do on theirs, actually.
Yeah. Yes, it's, there was some detective work over the past year to come up, to come up with the names and do the verification. Jean Bartlett was very helpful. She's been, she's very persistent and has contacts. And we feel real good about the included, everyone is included. And it's a, it's a proper memorial. It really is.
Mayor Beckmeyer?
Just a comment and a question. I heard a presentation by your group. I'm not sure if you made it, Mike, or not. It was so long ago, pre-COVID, at a Rotary Club meeting at Sanchez Art Center. And was that you?
That wasn't me. That was Rich Jasso. He's the good-looking younger one.
Right, right, right. So I found that to be really compelling as well. And I hope there's a way for you to get that story out. The photos of the friends together at Lindemar School and, you know, all together. And then hearing the reasons why this process was put together was really compelling. I wanted to ask you to please restate, you probably said it, but I don't know, what your gap is in your fundraising right now?
The gap right now in the fundraising would be about $6,500.
Not a large gap.
Right. Our goal was $20,000 and we're about $13,500 right now. So I feel pretty good. Feel pretty good that we're doing okay.
Very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yeah, thank you for sharing that information. Be sure to send it out in our networks. And what a wonderful tribute. Thank you so much for all of your passion to make it happen. And thank you for your service. And I hope you get to enjoy a Veterans Day with your family and loved ones. And I am looking forward to seeing this installed somewhere soon.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
All right. Do we have any public comment on this? I don't see any hands raised. Okay, we will move on to our Open Space Preservation Award, the Pacifica Land Trust. We have Ellen Natason here with the Open Space Advisory Committee. She is the chair and she will be presenting the award. Ellen?
Hi, I have, my video has been muted.
Yes, your video has been muted. You were on.
I was for a second.
There you go.
Okay, hi. Good evening, everybody. So I am Ellen Natason and I'm representing the Pacifica's Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee to present the Preservation Award for 2020. And I'm representing our committee, some of which are hopefully all on Zoom here with me, but you can't see them. So I'll list them off real quick. So in addition to me, Joanne Arnos is our vice chair, Alice Daniel, Paul Durkey, Kate Johnson, Stephen Kraus, Julie Lancel, Arlene Patton and Jim Sullivan. And I also just wanted, since we're about to lose you as our liaison, I wanted to thank Deirdre Martin for all of her great work with us. She's been a super engaged and supportive liaison to our committee and we will miss her very much. And we look forward to whoever we will be working with next. So every year, it's a very difficult choice. The Open Space Preservation Award is always hotly contested because there are so many great groups and individuals contributing to the protection of open space and nature and parklands in Pacifica. And because of all of these enthusiastic and hardworking people, we have the abundance of open space here in Pacifica. And that's one of the things that makes Pacifica such a great place to live. But this year, we selected the Pacifica Land Trust and I will read out our resolution or our proclamation. Okay. Whereas the Pacifica Land Trust has a mission to preserve, protect and enhance the natural scenic recreational cultural historic and open space environment, including waterways and wildlife corridors of Pacifica and the surrounding communities for present and future generations. And whereas the Pacifica Land Trust was founded in 1992 through the efforts of an all-volunteer Board of Directors. And whereas the Pacifica Land Trust, since its founding, has been instrumental in acquiring and preserving many prominent properties within and bordering Pacifica that are now forever protected open spaces for people and wildlife to share and enjoy. And whereas Pacifica Land Trust has played a key role in the preservation of the following significant properties, Pedro Point Headlands, Maury Point, Pacifica State Beach San Pedro Creek Watershed Project and Gateway to Sweeney Ridge to Crystal Springs Watershed. And whereas Pacifica Land Trust has developed partnerships with city, county, state and federal agencies as well as fellow land conservation groups to further connect open space trails and habitat within and surrounding the city of Pacifica. And whereas the Pacifica Land Trust continues to engage the community with monthly open space volunteer opportunities that serve to engage and enrich the fabric of life for every Pacifica resident, now therefore let it be proclaimed that we, the Open Space and Parkland Advisory Committee of the City of Pacifica, do hereby declare the Pacifica Land Trust the recipient of the 2020 Pacifica Open Space Preservation Award, done this ninth day of November in 2020. And I think we have Kathy Kellerman on the phone also. She's the president of the Board of Directors of the Pacifica Land Trust here to accept the award.
Thank you very much, Ellen. I am so honored. On behalf of the volunteers and the Board of Directors of the Pacifica Land Trust, thank you so much for this honor. I was told I had a few minutes to talk. So if that's true, I will just take a couple of minutes of your time to tell you a little bit more about us. Back, way back in the eighties, the then Open Space Committee and Advisory Committee to the Pacifica City Council recommended that a local land trust be created to facilitate, facilitate protection of open space. And so in 1992, the Pacifica Land Trust, an independent nonprofit, all-volunteer organization was created. And since then, we've had a role in several projects that have helped keep Pacifica the beautiful place that it is. So Ellen just named some of our achievements. And I just wanted to tell you a little bit more, an update on our most long-term commitment, which has been the acquisition, stewardship and restoration of the Pedro Point Headlands just to the south of Pacifica. Now owned by the City of Pacifica and the Coastal Conservancy, this 250-acre coastal gem was acquired in the early 1990s. But now the Pacifica, the Pacifica Land Trust is well into the second decade of our Pedro Point Headlands stewardship program, all-volunteer program, which has maintained the trails and removed invasive plants such as pampas grass and broom. And we're also in the final phase of the restoration and trail improvement project that has healed the erosion gullies from off-highway vehicle use and created a safe and sustainable trail system for hikers, bicyclists and equestrians. And this has proved to be a very timely project since we've seen such an upsurge in recreation as people from around the Bay Area and far beyond seek safe and sane outdoor activities. As the future site of the California Coastal Trail, this area will see even more use in the years ahead. The Pacifica Land Trust has been privileged to contribute to the wild and beautiful character of coastal Pacifica, bringing in residents and visitors to enjoy our beautiful town and providing much-needed space for wildlife and recreation. So again, thank you so much for this recognition.
Thank you, Kathy. Congratulations to everyone on the land trusts. I know it's a Herculean effort, a lot of things that you've done. And I do see that we have a public comment here, if council doesn't mind.
Dinah Verby, please state your name for the record.
Dinah Verby? Are you able to hear me? Yes.
Yes.
All right. I just want to, I'm the current vice president of the Board of Directors for the Pacifica Land Trust. And I wanted to just echo what Kathy said and extend my thanks. And on behalf of our entire board and all of our supporters and volunteers, thank you so much for this recognition. We're very pleased and happy to be doing the work that we're doing and hope to be able to continue it for, you know, a long time to come. And thank you again to the advisory committee and to the city council.
Thank you, Dinah. We have another hand raised?
Next we'll hear from Joanne Arnos.
Hello. Good evening. I just want to thank you Kathy, on behalf of the, I'm the co-chair of the Open Space Committee. And all the work that we are trying to do is really powerful in, but yours is more powerful in terms of the work that you do for the city of Pacifica. So I just want to say thank you for what you do. And on behalf of the Open Space Committee, we're so happy to be working with you. You keep the hills, you keep our town in this beautiful spot that we are. And one last thing is, Dietra, I'm going to miss you terribly, honey. You are, you are great on our committee. Maybe we'll, we'll see you anyway.
You will.
Okay.
Another hand raised?
Arlene, you'll be our next speaker. Please state your name for the record.
Arlene Patton? Thank you so much for all your work, Kathy. You're a star. Organization's done a great job. I am so proud of you all. Thanks.
Thanks, Arlene. Okay, I don't see any other hands raised. Councilmembers?
I'll just, I'll say congratulations and thank you for all the work that you've done with the open space. Thank you.
Pro Tem Mayor Pro Tem Beckmeyer?
I'll echo that and say that as I've become more aware of open space trusts, when I hear them talked about in the media and, you know, different areas around the Bay Area and the work that they do. And I realized, wow, we have had that in Pacifica for a very long time. And it's really amazing work that's been done and thank you.
Thank you.
Say thank you for all that. I know that Post has done some wonderful work down, down south of the slide. And, you know, buying the development rights to keep the land open. I think that's an excellent way to do it and keep family farms going.
Thank you so much. I know the land trust has been extremely important for a really long time now. So it's nice to hear a little bit about the work that you're doing now. And I think it's beautiful that you're being honored. And it's really nice to hear the people making public comment who actually are also so appreciative of you. So it's really nice that you're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, congratulations Kathy, well deserved. Please extend our thanks to everyone that works with you because I know it's a lot of volunteers that put in a lot of hard work and sweat. And we're thankful. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ellen. Okay, we will move on to our consent calendar this evening. I think we have a comment.
We have a proclamation.
We have a proclamation for Arbor Day.
How could I forget that? Have it up right in front of me. Thank you. Okay, we will, I will now, oh, cool. Caitlin, you're here to, from Tree City Pacifica, to accept the proclamation for our Arbor Day 2020 recognition. So I will go ahead and read that and then happy to see that Caitlin's on. So the city of, hang on one sec, I got three screens here. So give me a second. Okay, so this is a proclamation of the City of Pacifica and recognition of the observation of the City of Pacifica's Arbor Day on November 14th and a Tree City USA qualification event. Whereas in 1872, J Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day will be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas the holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is dedicated to the planting of trees in our community in order to support our environment and bolster our in order to support our environment and bolster our quality of life. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed at various times throughout the nation and the world. And whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heat and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, provide habitat for wildlife, create jobs. And whereas trees and their surroundings' soil can sequester carbon for thousands of years, thus helping to mitigate the effects of climate change and contributing to the city's climate action plan. And whereas trees can increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas by increasing retail spending and beautify our community. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving us paper products and wood for our homes and businesses. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. And whereas the city takes pride in being environmentally sustainable in numerous practices and processes and in encouraging residents to do the same. Now therefore I, Director Martin, Mayor of the City of Pacifica and all of its citizens, do hereby proclaim a second Saturday in November as Arbor Day in the City of Pacifica. And I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. And furthermore, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden hearts and promote the well-being of this and future generations, done this ninth day of November 2020. Wow. That was a mouthful, but it really is so important. I, Caitlin, are you, are you there to receive the, there you are.
Yes. Hi. I have the boat docks behind me. I just wanted to say thank you so much for the proclamation and recognizing so many of the benefits that trees bring to our community. Caitlin Pastore, I'm one of the newer members of Tree City Pacifica. We're a citizens group who organize an annual Arbor Day and have worked very hard alongside the city to help Pacifica become a Tree City USA. Our first Arbor Day was last year, and it was a really big success. We had over 70 participants, and it was a really wonderful way to engage and educate the community. It was held in Valamar. This year, we're gonna have to have a bit more of a restrained celebration for the trees. Following the COVID safety protocols, we're organizing a small socially-distanced Arbor Day, and that celebration will take place in the Lindemar neighborhood on November 14th. We'll be planting 28 trees outside of the Sanchez Library and Sanchez Art Center on Arbor Day. And then three more trees will actually be planted in the dog park soon after. The way that we implemented safety measures and planned to carry out this and execute is we've had to limit our participants to those who have registered. We also have a waitlist of people, so those who have canceled have immediately been replaced by other eager families. Those contributors are either families or pandemic pods to make sure that we are following the safety protocols. We're also requiring them to wear masks and gloves and stay socially distanced. And we stagger the start times as well. So as much as we can all be brought together, we are still joining together to contribute to the community. Some people that aren't able to participate because we had such a great response are actually planting trees at their own homes, and we'll be sharing photographs of that for us to use on our social media so they can become a remote participant. Kind of a funny way to do things, but what to expect out of this year, but something a little atypical makes a lot of sense. And really, none of this could happen without the support and cooperation of the city, from donating trees to working hard to prepare the digging of the holes and locations for Arbor Day, watering post-planning to make sure that our efforts don't just end on the end of the one day. And Public Works has really been a huge contributor and very wonderful to work with, and we're very grateful to their partnership for the important event. We really appreciate all members of the community that are supporting the event and planting trees this year, from the families to high school students, Girl Scouts, Boy Scouts. We even have an Eagle Scout project where someone is creating and reading up next to the tree that they'll be planting. So not only is this a special day and something that we'll be able to observe as we pass these spaces, but as we engage with them too, there'll be special moments created within these plantings. Planting trees by volunteers, you know, it's a huge contribution, as you mentioned, to help mitigate climate change, provides home for wildlife, beautifying, you know, the cultural event centers in Pacifica and really enriching the environment of Pacifica for generations to come. So again, on behalf of the group and the community, we just extend our gratitude.
Thanks, Caitlin. Mary, does any council members have any comments?
Oh, yeah, I'll go ahead. Yeah, Caitlin, thank you so much. Last year I participated, and it was so much fun. So, and way to go, you know, pivoting and creating something that'll be safe for our community. So thank you so much.
Mayor Pudne Beckmeyer?
Thank you for the great work on this endeavor. I know it came together to, to create the organization last year pretty quickly and to dedicate the second Saturday of November as Arbor Day in Pacifica every year. And it's amazing to see the growth just in a year, even with COVID. So it's really exciting to see the progress and the future for this, this endeavor and this organization.
I'd like to say thank you too. I'm a huge tree fan. If you could see my house, you'd know that. My neighbors hate it, but I like it. So I just want to thank you for everything that you've done. Thanks.
And I'll just echo everybody else's comments. Thank you.
Thanks, Caitlin, for being here, and thanks to everyone in Tree City Pacifica. I know it's also a lot of, of, all volunteers. And I want to thank the City of Pacifica, especially Public Works, for coming together and helping out and people just dedicating their, their hours to this and volunteering. I know my husband's leading one of the pandemic pods of which I am participating, so I'm looking forward to it this weekend. And hopefully we see some of you there. If not, Sue Vardalos may be caught hugging her tree.
I didn't sign up. I didn't realize you had to sign up, so.
You can hug your tree instead. We'll, we'll.
I will. Many trees.
I don't see any hands raised for public comments, but best wishes, Caitlin. Send the group our regards. And we will move on now to the consent calendar. Mary, do I have that right? Okay, okay, great. And I think we have a comment by City Clerk Coffee on item number nine?
Yes, Mayor Martin, I just wanted to point, point out that item number nine, a revised attachment was sent out to council members today. And that revised attachment with the records retention policy, administrative policy number eight is also posted on the city's website on the City Council Agenda's page with the supplemental materials. So that Exhibit A shall be considered as you are considering the consent calendar with respect to item number nine.
So, Madam City Clerk, does that mean that the motion for this particular item needs to be amended from what was in the packet?
Yes, so.
Probably pull this item from the consent and have it heard right after the consent calendar.
I don't know, I can make a motion, but we have to have any public comment? Is there any public comment?
Do we? No, I don't see any public comment.
Okay, so I make a motion to approve the consent calendar minus item number nine. And then I'd like to just have a little chat about item 10.
So do you want to pull item 10 as well?
Yes, item 10.
I'll second. Okay, can we, I don't see any objections. Quick roll call vote, please.
For consent calendar items number one through eight, Councilmember O'Neill.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vadalos.
Yes.
Mayor Pudne Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And consent calendar items one through eight passes unanimously.
Okay, so item number, let's talk about 10 first.
I just had a question because I'm kind of concerned about that this being the hybrid economic development and financial sustainability person that you're kind of looking for two different skillsets. You know, a guy that, you know, a numbers guy isn't necessarily familiar with the planning issues you have, maybe, or the network to try to bring in businesses. Also attending like the CMCDA events and the different, and the Convention and Visitors Bureau cons- item meetings that need to be held on the peninsula as part of the job of economic development. So I, I just wanted to kind of register those objections, although I do see it's a savings of $93,000 in the budget, and I don't think there's gonna be a lot of new businesses opening up in the next three to four years. So I just kind of wanted to make that statement, and I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not, but I just wanted to get it in the record.
Sue Vardalos?
Well, as far as that goes, Mike, we need to get all of our existing businesses back open. I think that's a big goal for someone who comes in as economic development, to make our businesses sustainable and make sure that they can reopen. I think that's a big part of it, and that all relates to finance, really. Because the more businesses you have, the better your finances are. So just how.
I'm aware of that, council member.
How I.
I, I am very familiar with that, yes.
Mayor Pudne Beckmeyer?
I raised some of those concerns with the city manager, and he may want to make a comment himself on this. But the upshot is that, you know, my takeaway is that we're Pacifica, and we're always looking for people who think outside the box and who don't necessarily fit into every very discreet box. So in terms of people wearing more than one hat sometimes in Pacifica, I can see how this is necessary from the city's point of view. Your point, Mike, is, yeah, but is there a client, I mean, a applicant pool out there who's gonna have both skillsets? And I think what I'd like to see is somebody beyond strictly the finance. I think we do need that out-of-the-box thinking. So, you know, I think we take a shot, and it's like any other recruitment. If there's not a good, strong applicant pool, then we may have to pull back and retool.
I planned on voting yes. I just wanted to take and make the statement that I think it's kind of looking at two different skillsets and concerned about the depth of need per what Sue Vardalos said of getting existing businesses opening and offering them a support in terms of someone that's familiar with SBA lending, the small, Samhail County Small Business Support Group down there, CMCDA Convention and Visitors Bureau, the bid. It's, it's a job that needs someone with extensive background in economic development. And I, I just kind of am concerned about, then, who knows? Dear Mike, you know, Moses walked out from Sinai, this person might walk down from Harvard, who knows? Okay, so I just am concerned, that's all.
I also raised concerns because I think I had a hard time understanding how this could fit in a 40-hour work week because it seems like two separate jobs. But yeah, city manager Woodhouse had, had some things to say that made me feel a little bit better about that.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I agree with all the comments that all the council members have made. This is a challenging position, but let me just offer a couple perspectives. In terms of actual capacity for the position, the previous finance director was the Finance and Administrative Services Director, as well as the Assistant City Manager. Tina Waremeister is now the Assistant City Manager, and she's also in that capacity handling HR and IT. So the finance director position actually, from what previously was handled, has more capacity there. So putting economic development under, under those responsibilities capacity-wise should fit. Ideally, you would maybe have a, both finance director and an economic development manager position separately, I mean. But it's really difficult to recruit finance directors. And one way to be creative and to cast the net wider is to look for someone who has that core experience, but is also looking for more experience, and in this case, would have economic development experience too, and then build on that. And so that's the goal. It's definitely gonna be a challenging recruitment, and that's why I agree with all the comments mentioned. But we've been very successful in our recruitments in Pacifica, in Pacifica's way to, up to this point. So that's part of what's behind this recommendation, and we'll, we'll be looking for that, that ideal candidate. And if I were younger, this would be a really attractive position for someone who wanted to, you know, rise to become a city manager later in their career. So we, we'll be tackling, tack it, tapping all of the organization's economic development, finance side, municipal management side to seek out a great candidate.
Okay, any more comments on that?
I'll make a motion, number nine, I guess if Sarah correct. Feel free to correct me if I do this wrong. I, I make a motion that the past items nine and 10, nine being amended to reflect the new information and attachment A that was sent out late after, earlier today. Is that good?
I think so.
Yes.
Okay. So I make that motion.
Second.
Okay. I have a question before we vote.
Okay, go ahead.
I need to have a better understanding of what changed on number nine because I was busy working today and didn't have time to check any updated emails before this meeting. So can you please outline that a little tiny bit before we vote?
Councilmember Beckmeyer, the, what, what changed was the addition of a section 6.3 in the records information and information management program policy. And inadvertently, when the packet was produced, section 6.3, which covers the destruction of records, and section seven, the procedures with respect to access to electronic record systems, process for scanning and imaging records and documents, and then the destruction of official records was, was left out of that attachment. So those are, those are sections that should have been included in the, in the full admini- new administrative policy, proposed administrative policy number eight, the records and information management program policy.
Okay. More detail on.
Madam City Clerk, I think what council, what Vice Mayor Beckmeyer is asking for, you're gonna need to summarize what was in those sections that were inadvertently left out. So just to clarify, nothing has changed in the policy. The policy remains the same, but those sections were just left out of, of the packet. So what City Clerk is going to do now is just briefly summarize what those sections entail.
Yes. So within the section of the, for the destruction of records, this describes the, the policy with respect and procedures with, with respect to creating a trusted copy of a, an electronic, a trusted copy of a physical record into an electronic record. And it covers the destruction of duplicate copies such that no duplicate copy of a record will be maintained longer than the retention period for the official record. So that when an official record is, is scheduled for destruction, that all duplicate copies are destroyed as well. Um, it it covers the destruction of transitory records, which are um, which are not, you know, uh, official records. These are things that are um, transitory records would be, records that would be for the purpose of um. Uh, you know, daily uh, daily work um, until you get to a finished work product. Um, it covers the destruction of non records, uh, which are similar to transitory records. Um, and destruction of uh, information on obsolete electronic equipment. It um, it covers the destruction of non paper media records. So um, so things stored on. Uh, discs or diskettes or um, similar. It it goes over procedures for uh, for uh, the destruction of records. Uh, procedures for scanning and imaging of uh, records and documents. Um, so that um, it defines what a trusted copy is and and what um. And that those are stored in the city's laser piece system. And um, and then it covers the schedule for the destruction of official records. And that um, in, as pertaining to the uh, records retention schedules. Um, that if the expiration uh, the expiration dates that are defined. Uh, those records would be destroyed within the the calendar year that's defined by that uh, by that period of time. It it covers um, how those records would be destroyed, brother, whether they be recycled bin or shredding. And the oversight of that type of destruction.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Do we have a motion and a second?
I don't see any comments. So roll call vote, please.
Councilmember O'Neil.
Yes.
Councilmember Beer.
Yes.
Councilmember Vatalos.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer.
Yes.
Mayor Martin.
Yes.
And items number nine and ten on the agenda pass unanimously.
Great. Okay, let us move on to um, oral communication. The time for the public to uh, talk about anything that is not on the agenda. Now would be the time to raise your hand if you have something that is not on the agenda. You will have three minutes to speak. And I will hand it off to Deputy Clerk Elizabeth Brooks.
Our coffee is ready with the timer. Our first speaker will be Suzanne Moore.
Good evening, Suzanne Moore. We cannot forget our moral obligation to those in Pacifica who are unhoused. We must continue to seek solutions that will provide a pathway to housing and increase safety, especially in this pandemic. A recent community meeting on homelessness in which county experts shared their knowledge and recommendations, we learned there are solutions if there is community will. Many in our community believe that no one should have to live on our streets. And in this pandemic and economic downturn, we should help our unhoused neighbors. A recent survey reminds us that the majority of those who live in motor homes. Were priced out of their housing here and that they have strong ties to our community. Over seventy percent are working poor. A growing number of unhoused are over age fifty. We look forward to a time when all Pacificans are housed, are safe and are able to reach their full potential and contribute to our community. This will only be possible if we give a hands up to those who need a pathway to housing. Let's seek solutions rather than barriers to help our neighbors find their way home. Thank you.
You Susan.
Anita Reese, you're our next speaker.
Hello, Anita Reese with the Pacifica Resource Center. I just want to thank the city and the community again for your ongoing support. While we have continued to adjust as uh, shelter in place orders have continued due to COVID. Um, our office continues to be open to the community with limited hours that were open to the public. We are open to visitors Mondays and Tuesday mornings, Wednesday and Thursday afternoons, and we're open our regular Friday hours, nine to one, nine AM to one PM. When our office is closed to visitors, we are available by phone only. We can be reached by phone at six five zero seven three eight seven four seven zero. By email at info at packresourcecenter.org or via our website at packresourcecenter.org. We are still enrolling Pacifica families in our Thanksgiving and Holiday Joy Program. Thanksgiving support will be during our regular grocery drive through and deliveries, including deliveries on November eighteenth. We will provide pre-packed groceries to all and for those who sign up in advance, we'll also be providing a gift card for holiday items. For holiday joy, we'll still be matching PRC families and generous donors. But we are only accepting and providing gift cards to minimize risk to our holiday joy families and our donors. We will be collecting gift card packages for distribution for the first week of December. We are still providing groceries, um, including deliveries to seniors and at-risk families uh, by monthly. Weekly for anybody who comes through to uh, the American Legion Hall at five 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 Buell. Uh, folks who are signed up in advance have a scheduled distribution time. Everyone else who needs groceries can arrive at three thirty and will provide groceries as quickly as possible. We are not having a distribution on November eleventh or the twenty fifth of November due to the veteran, due to Veterans Day and the Thanksgiving holiday. Uh, PRC continues to help folks who are unable to pay their rent or mortgage. If any renter homeowner needs help paying their November, any past due rent or mortgage, please have them contact us by phone, email or via our website. And we are continuing our work outreach into unhoused folks in Pacifica to connect them to resources and ultimately help them become housed. If you know or see someone who's living on the streets, in an encampment or in a vehicle, please contact our UC Outreach staff. By email at ucutreach@packresourcecenter.org or by calling Daniel Gardner at six five zero five seven five four eight six one. He can also accept tap. Um, if you or someone you know need help for the holidays, groceries, financial assistance for rent, mortgage or other critical needs. For access to homeless services, please contact us at six five zero seven three eight seven four seven zero. Or on our website, packresourcecenter.org. Thank you.
Thanks Anita. Okay, I don't see any more hands raised, so I will close oral communications and. Come back to for council communications. Any updates from the council?
Hi, um, I am Chair of Council of Cities, so I attended the Council of Cities on Affordable Housing for East Palo Alto. They're going to have five hundred new affordable units and they're going to preserve two hundred. Um, affordable units. It was a really moving meeting and a lot of really good information. On what they're doing. Um, a lot of it involves building on church properties. Um, I went to the uh, COVID Recovery Council, the county meeting. Um, and this is not in Pacifica, but this morning. Um, on my walk uh, down to Maury Point, I encountered a um. A ranger, a National Park Ranger, someone has put up a lovely big sign that said. Um, let's keep it together and it covers the graffiti on one of the walls there. And it's really very nice and people are going up there and taking pictures and he said, we're removing it tomorrow. Why? Because he said then people will build wherever they want to and there's no permission granted. And they will not allow permission, so they're going to take it down. It's going to be an ugly graffiti wall. So if anybody who goes out there is interested, please contact the park service as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thanks Sue. Councilmember Beer?
Sure, I'll go. Hi, everybody. Um, let's see, I went to Housing Leadership Day. It was uh, put on by the Housing Leadership Council and it was a. A really wonderful um, morning spent with a whole lot of other housing advocates. And they did some tours, some virtual tours of all the housing developments up and down the um, the peninsula. And so that was really interesting to see all of the work that's been going on. It was very uplifting and I think I needed that. So thank you to the Housing Leadership Council. Um, I attended the Pacifica Resource Center Board Meeting. I attended the Age Friendly Coalition Meeting. And uh, just so people know, um, Supervisor Canapa is having a age friendly town hall meeting on November twelfth. Um, I also attended the Progress Seminar this week where Fiona Ma was was speaking, so I learned a lot by listening to her. Um, and I want to thank Park Beach and Recreation for what you did on Halloween for our young people. I heard so many compliments about that and people were really grateful, so thank you for that. And then I just want to say something um, kind of on a personal note. Um, I've been encountering a lot of tension in our community, you know, in regards to elections and things like that. And so I just, I just hope that everybody can move forward and be nice to each other. Seems that that's not happening a whole lot in my neighborhood and it's a little disturbing, so let's just be nice to each other and move forward. That's all. Thanks.
Mary.
Um, well, Sue can go. Uh, I attended, I had three meetings scheduled today, but I'm, but I had to let Sue go to one of them as my alternate. So attended the strategic plan meeting for the um, airport roundtable. We're trying to put the ideas in for the final work plan. Hopefully, we're going to try to be as aggressive as we can with the FAA. Um, also attended the strategic planning meeting for commute.org. And spoke about how Pacifica and the coast gets very little service from the organization. And that they might need to really look, and this is something Mary might want to do is. Um, look at commute.org making some sort of commitment to fund shuttle services or. Bands or buses or whatever from affordable housing units. Because if there's a commitment to some sort of ser- um, transportation, they could have. You know, a lower cost per unit because there's less parking requirements in addition to the other benefits. So that's one thing I was trying to get into their strategic plan, so.
Thanks, Mike. Sue Beckmeyer, uh, Mayor Protem.
Last week was the Beautification Advisory Committee meeting and one of the items was getting ready for our workday, which happened on Saturday. November seventh, um, which was great. Um, it's the second workday on Palmetto. It was a great turnout. Um, the weather turned out to be great, which wasn't really expected. And we got, I don't know, like fifty or sixty plants replanted in different bulb outs. There was a quite a large contingent from the Rotary Club that turned out. Thank you for that. And so that was great. Um. I also attended the Progress Seminar and I agree, Councilmember Beer, Fiona Ma, I was like, I'm so exhausted. After her presentation and and the amount of stuff that she knows and shared was just mind boggling. Um, but gave me a lot of ideas about potential additional funding sources for Pacifica. So that was very positive. And then um, the other session was on the vision for what work will look like, what workplaces will look like. Um, as we come out of COVID and that, you know, what is a hybrid work situation look like? How much of of work at home is going to stay and um, and definitely how that impacts. Uh, as you were just saying about transport- transportation impacts and things. Um, the city manager from from South San Francisco. Stated it really clearly. He said, traffic Armageddon will return. And so while right now there's some lighter um, traffic being experienced, it is, there is an uptick. Um, but one of the things that I really wanted to share from that, that I thought was just inspirational kind of, was the concept of what is the nature of work? And the the um, speaker who was from Wonderman Thompson. Said, it's about relationships and a shared sense of purpose. The longer we're separated. The higher will be the loneliness and the stress and the lower productivity. People like to go to work. Going to a place, spending time at the office is part of the experience for some people. So I felt that really interesting um, as a perspective. And then the other piece that. You know, in terms of equity, uh, again, the city manager of South San Francisco, Mike Fertrell. Was saying that there's a real equity gap in the ability for lower income, community facing employees. To have access to needed resources like childcare and healthcare and transportation. And folks who travel the furthest distances from naturally affordable housing and who. Rely the most on public transit are at greatest risk. So it was very um. Thought provoking. Um, and and I think that there's a lot going on in South San Francisco with their growth. Uh, and their transportation plan, their city focused transportation plan that that I think while we're on the coast and we're a different deal. I think we could really benefit from engaging more with that. And yes, um, Councilmember O'Neil, I attended the library JPA meeting. From the comfort of my home this morning at eight fifteen. And um, there was a lot of important information that I'll update you on, but from the public point of view, a couple of notes. Um, there are bu- book bundles that have been put together um, for pickup. Because they're doing drive-by, you know, pick up your your orders, the things that you've put on hold. But there's also these bundles. For kids and adults, there's like a mystery bundle. And there's, you know, five different children's books on a topic and and you don't have to check them out. They're just there, you pick them up and go. And it's, and then bring it back. It's like an honor system thing. Bring it back when you're done. Um, so that's been really helpful. Um, also, there's a new program for checking out sewing machines. That is part of the county library's um, Library of Things program. Where you can also check out GoPros and you can check out hiking backpacks with all kinds of gizmo equipment. So I thought that was interesting and something folks might be interested in. And that's all I have.
Thanks, Sue. Um, we have, we have uh, picked up some book bundles in our house. They are exciting and fun. Although they have the same rules in our house as other library books that tend to take walks. And I want to remind folks that we are still in a pandemic and we are still required to wear masks. And however, there are businesses that are still open. And there are businesses that are open that need your business and just one such example is a dance studio, for instance. Um, and and I use that as an example because my child goes and there are certain protocols in place. It is all very safe. But uh, she absolutely loves it. It is something that's just been missing in in her life. And um, and I encourage those people who who want to still go swimming with their kids, who wants to still do dance, who wants to still go. To the, you know, park that you start to do those things because there are safety measures in place. Um, and you know, that's all I wanted to say. And while I'm on the subject of parks, I was hoping that um, either. Uh, City Manager Woodhouse or um, Director Perez, just to give us a brief update um, in the next minute. Uh, on any issues at our parks. I know that that was a very widely talked about on Nextdoor. And and in the the Mothers Club group too. Um, and and I, and um. I want to thank Park Speech and Rec for the Halloween uh, drive-through, which I attended with my kids. And it was scary and it was fun. It was, it was probably scarier in the dark, but it was so cool. And um, you know, one thing I noticed was that you were on a skeleton crew. I know you're laughing. Um, but um, no, I mean, really, everybody who's working there was the, was the heart of. Park Speeches and Recreation, you know, usually see all these kids, you know, the leaders in training and all these things, but I just want everybody to know, I mean, they're, you know, everybody's. Busting their hump, um, you know, to to make these things happen for the city. And I'm just so thankful that you're there. And um, like you brought such a smile to my face and and our um, our witchy poo also. Uh, so thank you all. Uh, and then finally, I want to remind everyone that Wednesday we're observing uh, Veterans Day. Uh, I want to thank all those. I want to thank all those veterans who are working hard. My husband is a veteran and he's on the Veterans Commission this evening on his call tonight, which is why I was having some connectivity issues. But I want to thank you all, all the veterans out there and hope that you get to enjoy a nice day with your family and remember those that gave their lives for our protection. And I hope that we can all come together, as Councilmember Beer said, and try to, you know, just heal a little bit. So with that, I will close Council Communications and move on to Staff Communications.
Thank you, Mayor Martin and Mayor Potem Beckmeyer and Councilmembers Kevin Woodhouse, City Manager. I have a few announcements. Let me start regarding upcoming Veterans Day because just on a related note, recently, we made some adjustments to the flagpole at City Hall. The two trees and the two poles out in front of City Hall, one of the trees was really overgrowing the one pole, making the United States flag less visible. So what we've done is we've moved that flag to the west side pole, where the tree was trimmed back so that the pole is much more visible with the flag on it, as well as the California State Flag beneath the United States flag. And that side is lit all the time. So you'll see an improvement there in front of City Hall. It'll all be completed before Veterans Day. And the east side flagpole will be removed. So I wanted to mention that. Playgrounds. I have not heard any, we recently opened playgrounds. And of note to that is the brand-new playgrounds that was installed at Fairmount West, as well as down at the Community Center are now open for use. And I have not heard of any issues that we've run into. If there are any, and Public Works Director Peterson or Park Speech and Recreation Director Perez have heard anything, they can come on and turn on their video and speak to those. But those are open now and extra protocols and signage related to those. I also wanted to announce that, hot off the, well, let me pause because Director Perez is on.
I didn't have, good evening, Councilmember Michael Perez, Park Speech and Recreation Director. I don't have a whole lot to report on the playgrounds. I do know there's a lot of excitement, particularly at the two brand-new playgrounds that the city manager mentioned at the Community Center and at Fairmont West. I do know that several wheeled vehicles were trying out the new playground at the Community Center and were asked to not ride their scooters and bikes and skates down those things. And we had a couple instances of those, which is particularly funny when the skate park is right next door. So we asked folks to kind of use the playground for what they're intended to be used for. But I don't have any, you know, good, bad, or indifferent. But I will say that probably leading up to and when it was able, we were able to open them, we did get a lot of emails asking, "When will you open them and what's going on?" And we told most folks, we let them know what we were doing. And I think they were very supportive and we appreciated their patience very much as well.
Thanks, Mike.
Great. Thank you, Mike. The next announcement I wanted to make was that, as the council is aware, coming up next week on November 17 is a special meeting regarding the Sharp Park specific plan. And from the last meeting that the council had, we received the direction to create some new visualizations. And just this evening, those visualizations were launched on the Plant Pacifica website. There's a link to take a virtual tour of what Palmetto would look like under the various recommendations. And that link will be pushed out widely. I think it's already been blasted out. And so take a look at that, the virtual tour, that adds the new visualizations. And comments can be submitted in prior to next Tuesday's special meeting on Sharp Park specific plan. And then finally, I also did want to, it's been a little while since I've talked about COVID-19. And today, the health officials from the 10 Bay Area counties issued recommendations for safer holidays and travel. And we're entering into that holiday season where getting together with family, an extended family, is really, you know, a core of those holidays. And the health officials want everyone to be extremely careful. Don't need to tell the council that nationwide, we're in a very difficult time with COVID-19. And while in San Mateo County and generally in the Bay Area, we're doing a lot better than other places in the country. But what could happen is a lot of travel outside of the Bay Area during the holidays and that causes us to regress, which of course has all the ramifications of harm to businesses and our economy, not to mention just the health impacts. So the 10 Bay Area Health Officials thought it very important to issue important guidelines for what you should consider regarding the holidays. And I'll just read an excerpt, and this information is going to be up on the city's coronavirus webpage, as well as it's on the San Mateo County Coronavirus site. But the joint recommendations advise the public that if you gather in person, keep it small, short, stable, and outdoors. Also, nonessential travel, including holiday travel, is not recommended. Travel outside the Bay Area will increase your chance of getting infected and spreading the virus to others after your return. And for those who are traveling, there are tips to help avoid catching COVID-19 or spreading it to fellow travelers. And if you do travel outside the Bay Area, it is strongly recommended that you self-quarantine for 14 days after your return, your return, if your activities while traveling put you at higher risk of getting COVID-19. So they, region-wide, were very concerned about a potential slideback after the holidays because interaction with various families together is such a big part of the holidays. So I just wanted to say that that information's out and available. Folks should be mindful of it and, of course, continue to practice all the basic safety practices as we do continue in this pandemic currently. That completes my announcements.
Thanks, Kevin. Okay, so we have a public hearing this evening. I have to pull up my procedures here to make sure that I'm doing the right thing. Okay, so. We have a consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of Site Development Permit PSD 84319, Coastal Development Permit CDP 409-19, Use Permit 118-19, and Sign Permit S131-19 for construction of a three-story mixed-use building known as 1300 Danman, consisting of ground-floor commercial space and six residential apartments located at the north quadrant of the intersection of Kent Road and Danman Avenue, in the 1200 block of Danman Avenue. Subject to conditions, consideration of revised alternative design concepts submitted by applicant and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. So most action is to move to adopt the resolution denying the appeal, modifying the Planning Commission's approval on approving site development. And you can read the rest under the item number 11 there, the repeats. So Tina and Helen, I think you have a staff report for us. Hang on one sec. Do we have any ex parte communications or any conflicts of interest for the council members on? Subak Meyer?
I spoke with the applicant about the project for clarification on a couple of points.
Okay, great. Helen?
All right. Good evening, guys. My name is Helen Gannon and the item before you is for the consideration of an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a mixed-use development project located at what most people know as 1300 Danman in Pedro Point and the consideration of a revised alternative design concept that was submitted by the applicant. On May 4 of this year, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2020-009 by a vote of 6 to 0 to approve the construction of a three-story mixed-use building with 3,050 square feet of ground-floor commercial space and six residential apartments above. On May 13 of this year, the city received an appeal and scheduled a hearing for July 13, 2020 with the city council. However, since then, both the applicant and the appellant have requested multiple continuances of the public hearing in an effort to discuss the issues raised in the appeal. The appellant's bases for appeal include concerns pertaining to lack of neighborhood consultation and noticing for the project, the project's lack of scale with the rest of the neighborhood, coastal erosion, geological risks, natural resources, and the consideration for lot merger in accordance with city regulations. As further explained in the staff report, staff has evaluated each basis for appeal and recommends that the city council reject all of them. Moreover, the applicant took into account each appeal basis in its discussion with the appellant to formulate an alternative project design that would satisfy the appellant's concerns. The alternate project design concept would include the construction of a two-story mixed-use building consisting of ground-floor commercial spaces and four residential apartments above. Some key modifications of the alternate project design concept include, but are not limited to, the following: reducing the number of dwelling units from six to four apartment units, modifying the exterior materials to eliminate brick and add a natural stone and cedar siding, reducing the overall height from 33 feet and nine inches to 29 feet and four inches, therefore eliminating the third story, reducing the square footage of the commercial space from 3,050 square feet to 2,290 square feet, and increasing all property line setbacks, notably the building setbacks from the north and eastern property lines, which would be Danman and Kent Road. The appellant has submitted two alternate design concepts, one with the required covered parking and one without the required parking as required by Condition of Approval Number 18 of the Planning Commission Approval and required by the Pacifica Municipal Code. The version inclusive of covered parking within carports most closely reflects the project as approved by the Planning Commission. And approval of the version without covered parking would require city council to approve a parking exception. Staff has reviewed both alternate design concepts and believes that the required findings for the necessary Site Development Permit, Coastal Development Permit, Use Permit, and Sign Permit can be met for the alternate project concept included as Attachment J of the staff report. I'll add that the applicant's presentation tonight will include renderings of the new proposal for your viewing. Findings related to design guideline consistency and site development, such as size, materials, locations of the building, etc., were updated to reflect the changes. Should the council be receptive to modifying the project approved by the Planning Commission, staff has prepared findings for approval of the revised project with covered parking in the attached draft resolution in Attachment A of the staff report. Should the council determine that approval of a parking exception to eliminate covered parking from the project is appropriate, additional discussion of the required findings would be needed to establish the findings for that approval. Pursuant to the Pacifica Municipal Code, the council may approve, deny, or modify the development permits after considering the appeal. In the event that the council decides to uphold the appeal and deny the project, council will need to provide staff with the basis for those findings that are supported by substantial evidence so that staff can prepare a resolution to be brought back at a later date. In conclusion, the revised project does not conflict with any of staff's responses to the appeal points and actually goes a step further, addressing many of the issues raised by the appellant. Additionally, there is substantial evidence to support that the application of a Class 3 categorical exemption from CECA to both the original proposed project and revised project. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council deny the appeal and approve a revised project in accordance with the alternate design concept included in the staff report as Attachment J. The applicant, appellant, and the applicant's geotechnical engineer are available at tonight's hearing for any questions you may have for them as well. Thank you, and I am here for any questions you might have.
Okay, so do we have any questions for staff? No. All right. So I'm going to invite the appellant to speak. You have 10 minutes. So the question is, do you wish to reserve three minutes for rebuttal? Or do you want to use all your 10 minutes now?
Hi. Yeah, sorry. I missed just a second of that. It was just transitioning the Zoom call to this new mode. So I missed what you said, Deidre.
So Stephen, you are the appellant, correct? You're going to make the presentation? Okay, you get 10 minutes to speak. If you wish, you can reserve three minutes for rebuttal after the applicant.
Okay, that sounds great. I'll do that.
So you'll get seven minutes now?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Okay, so we will start the timer?
One moment, Mayor Martin. Mr. Clements has a presentation that I'm going to be bringing up momentarily.
Okay, so when we do the presentation, Stephen, you won't be able to see the timer, but I think someone will give you an alert. Yes?
Yes, Deputy City Clerk Brooks will be timing and will prompt you when there is around one minute remaining for wrap-up, unless you'd like a prompt sooner than that.
No, that's great. Thank you. Right, shall I start then?
We're all ready to begin.
Hi, yes. So just go to the next slide, please. So hi, I'm Stephen and this is my little family. So you might be wondering, what is this English person doing talking to us about Pacifica? I've lived here only for a few years in Pacifica. Before moving here, I spent 15 or so years in San Francisco and Oakland. And then I used to come here like every weekend to go surfing. Every weekend I would come here. Sometimes I would bring my kids. If you go to the next slide. And all that time, I kind of dreamed of like this place, you know? Just imagine living here was kind of what was going through my mind, that beautiful point. And I think, I don't know how much of you, how much of you guys have had to do with the development of this fine city, but it's such a great place, such a kind of magnetic place for me. And I'm just so proud to call it home now, especially the point, but all of Pacifica, too. I just consider the point to be my neighborhood. Now I've got really close friends I never could have made in like the 15 years I spent in San Francisco. I've made in months in Pedro Point and Pacifica. So I love this place and I hope that you understand that all of this concern, if you will, coming through with this appeal is really just from a good place. It's from my heart. If you go to the next slide, this was the original plan and kind of really where all of this began, for me at least as well, because it was just such a big development, such a big proposal. And it truly dwarfed the historic fire station. It was by far the biggest development. It is by far the biggest development that's been proposed that I know of on Pedro Point. It's huge, you know, and so that kind of had a lot of people sort of rallied a lot of community concern. All this began at the beginning of the coronavirus outbreak. I think that was when the first proposal got put in place. And so it was really hard for people to even talk about it because we couldn't just go around and knock on people's doors. But this big thing had arrived or been proposed on Pedro Point and obviously it got people kind of scared, to be honest. But I actually know, I actually have some friends that are mutual with the developers. So, you know, rather than just getting too irate about it, I tried to reach out and we eventually got in touch with each other and did some socially-distanced beer drinking, here or there, to try and discuss proposals and what we could do. And I do believe that they've listened to the community and taken on board the feedback that I was able And I do believe that they've listened to the community and taken on board the feedback that I was able to gather. You know, I don't think it's like something that everyone is happy with, I'm not going to lie, but there was definitely a kind of conciliatory vibe, and we reached a place that I feel, you know, better about. Like I said, not ideal, but I feel better about. So I don't actually have a rendering of it offhand, but they took a floor, a story off of it. They reduced the roof height by about five, six feet. You heard some of the other things, setbacks, etc. So to go to the next slide. So this is really the summary of it. This is a statement I've been asked to first read and then send by our lawyer. So it's not just my appeal, just to put this in context, there's quite a few of us who've contributed legal fees, who've written letters. You've probably been sent letters as part of this process. You know, there's 20 or so of us involved. But this is kind of where I stand in terms of my appeal. So I'm going to just quickly read this, if you don't mind. He asked me to do that, I know it's probably boring, you can read yourselves, but I'm going to read it anyway. So, "Dear Mayor Martin and members of the council, as you know, my attorney's Whitmer Parkin LLP submitted a letter to you in support of my appeal on July 10th, 2020. My attorney's letter is attached for your convenience. While I stand by the assertions of my attorney's letter and my appeal, if the council approves the recently revised project as submitted by the applicant, I have agreed to drop my objections to the project in the spirit of compromise and resolution. The applicant and I worked tirelessly to resolve this matter, and your approval will give effect to our resolution. If the revised project is not approved as submitted by the applicant, I stand by my objections to the project in my appeal, and I do not waive any of my rights to further challenge the project in accordance with my appeal and the issues raised in my attorney's letter. Thank you for your consideration, Stephen Clements, i.e. me." So I've probably got some time left, but that's the end.
Thanks, Stephen. Okay, so, any questions for the appellant? So Stephen, I do, everybody's shaking their heads no, but if what is being proposed this evening, if all council agrees that what is being proposed this evening looks good, then you're okay with it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, Mike, you're on mute.
And I assume, Stephen, that means, I think it was Letter J with the covered parking? Because there's two alternatives from the applicant, one with uncovered, one with covered. And if I remember correctly, J is the one you're approving?
Yeah, honestly, the covered parking is not a huge concern for me, Mike. So I think from my memory, other people are more inclined to favor the one with covered parking, but I don't personally have a huge preference on that.
Okay, well, just whenever the motion is made, I want to be sure we do the right one, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Okay, so I will invite the applicant to speak for 10 minutes now. And I will also offer the same, do you wish to reserve up to three minutes for a rebuttal? Is that correct, right? Clerk Coffee?
Yes, that's correct. They'll have the option to reserve up to three minutes for rebuttal if they wish.
Are you speaking for the applicant?
Give us a moment to transition, and we're bringing them over right now.
Hi, this is Mike O'Connell.
The applicant, we'll have Mike O'Connell, Michael Panisi, Dan Dykman, and Brian Brinkman.
Okay, Mike, are all four of you talking?
Probably just me and Dan Dykman.
Okay, so you want to save three minutes for rebuttal, or do you want to use all 10 right now?
We'll save three minutes.
Okay. Do you have a presentation, or are you just going to talk?
Yeah, Sarah's got it.
Yeah, I'll take a moment just to bring up the presentation, and then Deputy City Clerk Brooks can give the prompt to start when she has the timer ready.
And she'll let you know when you have a few minutes left, Mike.
Clerk Coffee, the timer's set for seven minutes, and I'll give a one-minute warning when the time is running out.
Great, thanks. So, yeah, Steve, I think hit on kind of a lot of the behind-the-scenes work that we did on revising the project, and I just wanted to go through a few of the new metrics with you all. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So the lot's about 14,000 square feet. 19 parking spaces are provided, even though we only need 16, so we're exceeding our parking requirement. Approximately 2,300 square feet of commercial on the ground floor. We're not permitting restaurants or fitness centers via a deed restriction, you know, and the desired tenant that we'd like to see here is some kind of a local maker. The residential makeup includes four units, two are one-bedroom units and two are two-bedroom units. Next slide, please. So this is the proposed site plan. It's a similar shape to the previous plan, but it's been scaled back and pulled away from the property lines. We've increased the setback along Danman, five feet to the ground floor and 10 feet to the second floor. We've increased the setback from Kent to 10 feet. And we've increased the setback from Beau Rivage approximately 10 feet. Next slide, please. So this is just a summary of the comparison between the previous design and this design. And so pretty substantial reductions, you know, 33% less residential units, 40% less square footage on the residential, 32% less square footage on the commercial. The building on the whole is about 36% smaller. The setbacks have increased, and the roof height has decreased. Next slide. So the next couple of slides are just renderings of the revised design. So, you know, this building is much closer in scale to the firehouse. The materials are different, so we're using cedar shingles. That will have kind of a natural or unfinished look, the weather naturally. And those are used on the top floor and then more of like a river rock, beach rock at the commercial level on the ground floor. Next slide. This is the new version of the rendering that Steve had up on his slide, so you can kind of, I wish I had them side by side. But you can see the difference, just if you look at kind of the top of the firehouse versus the top of this building. You know, we brought the height down, eliminated that third floor, and changed the materials. Next slide. And this is just another rendering at the corner, so. Yeah, next slide. The floor area ratio at this point has been reduced to 0.4, so that's consistent with other buildings in the neighborhood that are actually a little bit higher. And so we feel like we're better in better alignment with the rest of the neighborhood. Next slide. So I'm going to turn it over to Dan here in a second to discuss the bluff retreat, but, you know, we've done site-specific analysis for that, and we've increased the setback to the bluff from the previous design. So we're now at 132 feet on the west side and 175 feet on the east side. And we can go to the next slide, and then I'll turn it over to Dan. Go ahead, Dan.
Good evening, council members, this is Dan Dykman, I'm a geotechnical engineer. One of the things that we look at in terms of bluff retreat is that the county and USGS start with very, very conservative values for bluff erosion in order for you to take a preliminary look at whether a project might have an issue with bluff retreat or ocean retreat. The numbers are usually fairly high because they want you to take a very conservative look at what's going on. If your building or your property is going to be affected by the amount of bluff retreat that they identify, then you want to go in and take a more specific look at your specific site. The retreat rates are usually covering areas of several miles at a time in terms of how much of an area is being affected by bluff retreat. At a particular area, you can well see that what's going on in the beach, just, you know, a couple hundred yards away from here, is very different than what's going on at these ocean bluffs. We have a much more resistant bedrock down at the ocean level, which extends, you know, several meters above the elevation of the ocean. And then we get into softer sediments up above that. So comparing the bluff retreat or the ocean retreat at the ocean and the beach down below versus what's going on on the, this monolith of rock coming out of the ocean here are considerably different as to how they're going to respond to ocean waves. That's number one. Number two, the direction of wave impact versus coming against the bluffs is considerably different in terms of orientation, etc. So that is why we take a historic look at what is the ocean really doing to the bluffs in this area. We had gone back to 1955 and gone through historic aerial photographs to see what was happening with the bluff in this area. We had calculated the rate of retreat, which, depending on where exactly you were along the bluff range, from about 0.1 feet per year to 0.35 feet per year. The concern was that maybe things are accelerating because of ocean rise, etc. So one of the problems that we have as geotechnical engineers is that Google Earth has kind of messed with us in that the companies that used to do aerial surveys no longer found it economical to do that anymore. So now we have to rely upon Google Earth to take a look at things from above. So I retook a look at retreat rates going on post-2000 and to try to see how they were potentially affecting rates, obviously.
Your seven minutes are over.
Can we let Dan finish, and you can take it off for three minutes?
Yeah, go ahead.
My apologies, I'm going too long. I guess, so what I did was I did another analysis of what was going on over the last 20 years, and what we're finding is that in the highest location, we had a bluff retreat rate of 0.6 feet per year, which was incorporating that little scallop that occurred in the 2016 rainstorm year. And even if we project that as our analysis, we still barely encroach into the project's site over the next 100 years. So based on that, we feel quite comfortable that we have an adequate setback from the ocean bluff to sustain the 100-year design life.
Okay. Okay, any questions for the applicant? No, okay. I will open the public hearing and receive public testimony at this, oh, Subaralas.
Okay, you have adjusted your setbacks, and in commercial setbacks are not a requirement. Isn't that true?
Yeah, the previous project had zero setbacks in some locations.
But you added setbacks, that's...
Yeah, correct, there's a five-foot setback along Danman to the ground floor and a 10-foot setback along Danman to the second floor, so the building is kind of tiered now. And then along Kent, we had zero setback previously, there's 10 feet setback there now. Then we've increased the setback from Beau Rivage by 10 feet, by shrinking the building.
Thank you.
Sue? Okay, everyone okay if I open the public hearing and receive testimony from public? Yes, okay. I see one hand raised. Now would be the time to raise your hand if you have something you'd like to say on this item.
Clerk Coffee, I'm ready to bring speakers up. Would you like me to run the timer? All right, our first speaker is Sherry Chan. Please state your name for the record.
Hi there, my name is Sherry Chan. Can I start?
Yes.
Okay, I live on 324 San Pedro, about two blocks away from the proposed project on Danman Avenue. First off, I'd like to thank Steve for his hard work on this really long appeal and the dozens and dozens of concerned citizens who rallied for sustainable development and the applications for engaging with him. Sorry, I didn't drink beer with you, our kids do roast marshmallows together, we surf the same breaks, and I really love numbers, science, and public discourse, so I'm here again. I'm reiterating the city and state's requirement that new development on the coast, regardless of scale, must consider climate science and that this information needs to be included as part of the public record that the public can review. The new proposal, as submitted, doesn't include adequate setback from the shoreline and must include modern coastal erosion-style models. While this new proposal is more reasonable as far as quality of life goes in the short term, the proposed development still shifts the cost from remediation and cleanup to future generations. And I guess, I mean, it's April, as Mr. Dykman indicated, the California Coastal Commission noted that the applicant used historic erosion rates in the range of 0.1 to 0.45 feet per year, which, you know, for us, ends in the year 2000. For reference, the USGS rate again is 10 times higher, and the Coastal Commission has found it's 2.3% higher. Erosion has only increased, not decreased, over the last 20 years, and there's nothing on the record, which includes modern erosion rates in Attachment H, which is where we're supposed to be reviewing this application. We're just stuck looking at these PowerPoints right now, trying to figure out how to move forward and how to make long-term 100-year decisions. For us to trust this process, this information must be included in the application. The PowerPoint presentation, which the public has no opportunity to verify, isn't really working. This is just a fundamental hallmark of public process. And this is, I mean, I work for the state, and this is just not how it's usually done. In reviewing the Beach Boulevard project earlier this year, the California Coastal Commission actually rejected Pacifica's analysis and the city's jurisdiction over that project specifically because y'all failed to recognize the state's sea-level-rise guidance, which builds on science and provides recommendations for how to plan for and address sea-level-rise impacts. Yes, Sue, this is partially a commercial project, but this is also a residential project. There's going to be four families in there, right next to the coast. And the reason why the state guidance says that we must use the most conservative estimates is there is nowhere to move these houses and these people when yet another Pacifica apartment falls into the ocean. Thank you.
Thanks, Sherry. Okay, anyone else have anything they'd like to add? I don't see any more hands raised. No? Okay, I will close public hearing and ask if the applicant would like to provide a rebuttal. So you get up to three minutes, Stephen? You still around there?
Just need to, oh, he's...
Yeah, hang on, but I'm not the applicant, so I'm not...
Sorry, my bad, the appellant.
Stephen, you had 1 minute and 40 seconds of unused presentation time, and you still have three minutes for your rebuttal.
Okay. Do you want me to use that time? I'm very happy to.
Go ahead, Stephen, you're up, it's yours to use.
Yeah, well, I mean, the only thing that I would say is that, you know, a lot of us are not anti-development, and we understand that your jobs are very difficult. And like, frankly, we were willing, I was always willing to get, come to the table with the mics, who it turns out I have quite a lot in common with, and I'm glad to know them as people now. But this process definitely kind of pitted us against each other to begin with, and, you know, some of that was probably coronavirus, some of it was just... you know, some of that was probably coronavirus. Some of it was just, I think, the way the process is, is, was run, not, not pointing any fingers. It's just kind of how, how it is, I guess. But, you know, I found out about this development on the Friday and, and the Monday, then the following Monday, it was going in front of the city. You know, and it got a lot, it got a lot of people, people, people lost sleep, you know, and then people wanted sort of, wanted, wanted a pound of flash for it. And it took, it took a lot of work frankly to, to get to the table with the developers and talk it out. Um, so I kind of echo some of what Sherry was saying about how can we kind of make that process easier for the community and, and, and uh, you know, developers and yourselves perhaps to get together, some sort of advisory council or whatever. But, you know, it definitely was, it definitely was a little traumatic to say the least.
Okay. All right, so the applicant, Mike and team, do you, you have a few minutes or a minute or so? I think Mike is being promoted again. There you are.
Mike, your team has two minutes and twenty seconds remaining.
Uh, great, thanks. Yeah, I don't, I don't have too much more to add. I mean, I'm, I'm gonna echo what Steve said about, you know, it was, it was good coming to the table with, with Steve and Dan and we had a lot of good conversations and a lot of back and forth and, you know, it was um, good to get to, get to know those guys as well. Yeah, as far as the, the process and the outreach goes, I mean, I might be a little bit scarred from previous uh, experiences, but um, you know, in, in the past, we haven't you know, had, had project opponents or opponents that um, have even been willing to talk to us about what could we do? And so, you know, I'm grateful for that opportunity on this project because uh, you know, it's not, it's not always afforded to you. Um, but I think it does sort of, you know, uh, make it difficult for the outreach to happen in a, uh, you know, in an organic way. And, you know, COVID certainly didn't help that. But, you know, I think it's something we're definitely less apprehensive about in the future.
Great, thanks, Mike. Okay, um, so I will close public hearing now. Actually, I closed public comment earlier. I'll close the public hearing now and I'll return to council for deliberations.
I was just gonna, I just wanted to ask if the planning commissioner liaison had any comments?
Uh, there's a few on. Who's, which one was the liaison?
Jim Godwin. Well, he's next to you where I am, but I don't know where he's at with you. He's the planning commissioner, light commission liaison.
Oh, great, cool. Hey, Jim, do you have anything you'd like to add to this evening's discussion?
Yeah, just a couple of points. We, we all unanimously on the planning commission thought this was a reasonable project and approved it. Covered a number of things, including the, some of the colors of the buildings and the, you know, making sure it was sufficiently in character with the neighborhood and safety in terms of distance from the beach, the stuff that has been covered. And there was also a significant discussion on parking, which you have seen that the parking exception was withdrawn at the end of our, our discussion. So we feel pretty good about this project as originally designed and with the changes that have been made between May, when we met, and the current time. I think we can continue to be supportive, even more excited about the new design.
I think you. Any questions for Jim? Mike? No? Okay, so we'll bring you back to council for deliberation. Subarlos?
I really admire everyone involved in this, um, that people came together, made decisions, especially um, from the applicant, because he's considerably cutting back on the size of his building and the fact that he agreed to go along with what the neighborhood wanted is totally admirable on both sides. And the fact that it took them a long time to work together to come to a good solution, I really admire that process. And um, I just want to thank them for that.
Right. Mary?
Yeah, I, I would like to echo that and, and also say that, um, you know, these appeals are extremely hard. They're extremely hard on us and on everybody. And so to have people come together and, and work together, it, it's what we need to do right now everywhere, like in our community, in the country. Like it is a fine example of how to move forward with something with respect with each other. And I'm touched. I literally am touched by it. I'm relieved and I, I thank you.
I kind of wanted to echo what my fellow council people said is, I'm glad that they were able to meet, come to some sort of uh, settlement that they could all be unhappy about but live with. And I want to thank both of them, the, the applicant and the appellate for moving forward and trying to do that.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Uh, I agree with those sentiments that have all been stated. Uh, I feel that um, there's been a lot of collaboration and compromise between the parties and um, it's very refreshing. And I'm pleased to see it. I'm hoping to, to create uh, circumstances in, in town where more of that can go on. It seems to me that the project's scale is much smaller. It's a forty percent smaller building. It's shorter. It went from six units to four units. And um, the setbacks are much greater in light of some of the issues about coastal erosion. It looks like there are, there's going to be a project here that people can live with. And so I had a question about the USGS numbers. If, you know, it seems like we're much closer to the numbers presented. I went through the report several times. And it feels to me like this is a good compromise and staff has asserted that the project is consistent with the one-hundred-year design life requirements. I know the planning commission was um, satisfied with that, so I feel that I can support this project.
Okay.
As revised.
Got it. Okay, um, I echo what everyone else said. I think it's great that the community was able to come together uh, and agree on this. Um, I will go back to the planning commission and um, undoubtedly question the what I feel is um, rubber stamping coastal development in the coastal zone that I feel that the coastal commission will give us a hard time about. And I feel that it is my duty to say these things. While I appreciate all of the compromises, I also want to protect the future of the um, the coast and the, um, the need to per, the need um, to potentially protect our, the fact that we would eventually have to pay for something that may, may fail. I lived in the apartments that fell in the ocean. I lived in an evacuation zone um, and was evacuated uh, during the Fukushima tsunami. I, every winter, push in my beach cleanup for at least three months when the tides uh, over top at Clarendon and Beach Boulevard. And I don't agree with this coastal development. I didn't agree with the one on Beach Boulevard. And I know I'm in the minority here, but I have said my piece. So um, with that, I think we will, Mike?
I was just gonna make a motion. I just found it on the agenda. Let's see, move to, I had to come over to you. Move to adopt a resolution denying the appeal and modifying the planning commission's approval approving site development permit PSD eight four three dash one nine, CDP, CDP four oh nine nineteen, U use permit one eighteen, one nineteen, and sign permit S one thirty-one nineteen as revised by the alternative design submitted by applicant for the construction of a two-story mixed-use building known as thirteen hundred Damman, consisting of ground floor commercial space, four residential apartments located at the north quadrant of the intersection of Kent Road and Damman Avenue in the twelve hundred block of Damman Avenue. APA numbers oh two three, oh one three, oh one oh, and oh two three, oh one three, oh two oh, subject to conditions of approval file number two thousand nineteen twenty-five and finding the project exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
I'll second.
Through, through the mayor, before, um, before a vote is taken, I just wanted to clarify that the um, the recommendation from staff is to approve the version with the covered parking because that is consistent with the zoning code requirements. And so there's not uh, the findings for a parking exception to remove that covered parking at this time.
It's okay with me.
Okay, so with that, with that, with that exception, with that uh, note then, so do I have a second?
I second.
Mary seconded.
Okay, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember O'Neil?
Yes.
Councilmember Beer?
Yes.
Councilmember Vada Los?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Beckmeyer?
Yes.
Mayor Martin?
No.
And uh, that uh, motion passes with a vote of four to one, Mayor Martin uh, being the no vote.
Okay, thank you, everyone. You can all go to bed early, except the rest of us who now be hearing item number. Get back to my agenda here, item number.
This is item number twelve.
Yeah.
Which is the draft regional housing need allocation methodology.
Thank you very much. So we have um, Dr. Waremeister is gonna present us a staff report.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Martin.
Say for the record, can I just say sorry for the record? I did receive one comment about this item. And it was just that we, the, the recommendation was to move stuff about housing earlier in the agenda so more people can hear it. So for future, just mental notes, um, I think we were expecting that hearing to go well into the evening. Thanks.
Mayor Martin, Kevin Woodhouse, city manager. I, I just wanted to jump in and, and assistant city manager and planning director Waremeister will uh, be making the presentation. But I, I wanted to kick this off just to, yeah, we can all applaud.
Thank you.
I, I wanted to kick this off and, and Tina will touch on this as well, but this is a uh, a complicated topic. And we wanted to launch this discussion about it and get direction about comments the city of Pacifica may want to provide on this. Couple of things I wanted to say, just to make clear, I, I know the council members all understand this, but the, the regional housing needs determination process from the state, which then filters down to the regional housing needs allocation methodology determination process to A-BAG in our region, has been going on since the late sixties, since nineteen sixty-nine, I believe. Every eight years, uh, this determination is made and handed down. And, and the point I want to make is that this is not something the city is initiating. This is something that we every eight years react to and have to modify our housing element to meet. And the timing here is really important because the methodology from the regional methodology committee, the draft methodology has been arrived at and every, it's open for public comment. So on Thursday, A-BAG will be holding a public meeting. Anyone from the public can, can make comment. On Thursday evening, there'll be a presenter from A-BAG presenting at uh, this, the city county association of governments of San Mateo County meeting uh, at another public meeting. And of course, we have this one, which is focused uh, on, on Pacifica. So this is a big process. It's a long process. It uh, it recurs every eight years and the stakes related to housing pressures statewide have become so much more intense. And that's why this is so important. So I'll stop there. I did want to mention the A-BAG meeting, which is Thursday, and the CCAG meeting, which is Thursday evening. And then we'll just dive right into it uh, and, and should be a good discussion about this important topic.
Thanks, Kevin. Um, as Kevin mentioned tonight, I will introduce the draft regional housing needs allocation methodology that was prepared by the Association of Bay Area Governments, A-BAG. And then uh, explain the resulting draft allocation for Pacifica. As Kevin explained, this is an A-BAG developed methodology and the purpose of this item is to discuss a potential response from Pacifica. This regional planning process is not well-known outside of, generally, outside of elected officials and staff, and it's complicated. So I'm gonna do my best uh, for the public that may be watching to, um, to explain this process. So I'm gonna be maybe repeating a little bit of what Kevin said and then maybe get, going into a little bit more detail. So the regional housing needs allocation process, ORINA, is part of a state mandate that all California jurisdictions plan for the housing needs of all residents, regardless of income. You can think of the ORINA process, as we call it, as having three main parts, each with their own components. So the first part is the um, California Housing, excuse me, California Department of Housing and Community Development would develop the regional housing needs determination for the entire Bay Area for an eight-year period. As an aside, this happens for all jurisdictions. So that means every metro planning area throughout the state also goes through this process. It's not just a Bay Area-focused thing. So like the Sacramento area council of governments, they also go through this so that, you know, as well as in San Diego and any other council of governments throughout the state. Uh, for the purpose of the upcoming RENA cycle, the state determined that the Bay Area's regional housing need was over four hundred and forty thousand housing units. And um, just to give you the scale of that, the last RENA cycle, which we're currently in, RENA five, the allocation was just under a hundred and ninety thousand units. So it's quite a large jump. So the second part of this, of the three kind of main parts of RENA is the one we're in now, which is where the, the A-BAG Association of Bay Area Governments gets that regional number and then develops a methodology to distribute a share of the housing need to each jurisdiction within the Bay Area. So this is where we are now and I'll explain a little bit about this shortly. And so the third part, which would be coming up soon, is that then each local government takes their allocation and updates their housing element of its general plan and any other, you know, follow-on policy changes. So changes to the zoning ordinance, changes to the general plan in order to meet the community's housing needs as determined by this RENA process. So getting back to where we are now, which is the part two, which is the RENA methodology and distribution of units, I wanted to get a little bit more in-depth. So to assist them in preparing the methodology, A-BAG convenes what they call the Housing Methodology Committee. It consists of elected officials and staff from each county, as well as stakeholders from interest groups. The committee came to a consensus this, this time around, around several recommendations to guide development of the methodology. So those where more housing allocation should go to jurisdictions with more jobs than housing and to communities. And to communities exhibiting racial and economic exclusion. The methodology should focus on um equity as represented by high opportunity areas. And the relationship between housing and jobs. Equity factors need to be a part of the total allocation, not just. An individual individual jurisdictions income allocation. Um, that they would not limit allocations based on previous Rena. And um housing in high hazard areas is a concern, but that Rena may not be the best tool to address this. So it's important to note that this cycle, the methodology also included a factor to address proximity. To jobs via automobile commute, usually it's focused on transit, but this time around. If you were in a jurisdiction that is within a thirty minute automobile commute to a major job center. Your allocation was going to be higher. Um, so many of these factors uh contributed to Pacifica receiving a much higher. Rena allocation in the next cycle, which is, as you say, is still draft. Which these these allocation or these factors included. Um, as I mentioned, driving distance to major job centers, even though we do not have a robust transit service in Pacifica. We are close to downtown San Francisco, um and all the other major employment areas in San Mateo County. We're considered a high opportunity area, which is generally areas shown to support positive economic, educational and health outcomes. For low income families and their children. And because there was no reduction factor for past growth rates, because we have grown slower than communities around us. Um, that wasn't a factor, they they didn't kind of give a discount for that. Um, so therefore, what that means is that Pacifica's draft Rena six allocation. Is just over nineteen hundred units and represents a three hundred and sixty seven percent increase over the last cycle. So each year, the council receives a housing element. Um, annual update from staff that gets reported to the state. So you'll know that we have only built, Pacifica has only built seventy nine new housing units since twenty fifteen. So what's important to understand and putting this in context is the draft. Methodology results in an allocation that's approximately double Pacifica's general plan build out estimate. And so the general plan build out estimate has a twenty year time horizon. And projects that Pacifica would add a thousand more housing units under full build out for that time horizon. That is if everything is built kind of evenly over those twenty years, um that would average about fifty units a year. So the draft allocation is meant to cover, as we said, an eight year period. And that would be actually approximately a hundred and twenty, excuse me, four hundred and twenty two units a year. If it were, if we were developing consistently year after year. So this grow growth rate would require the city to carefully consider how provision of services would be impacted and expanded in all areas. Such as sewer, streets, general administration, parks and recreation, public safety. Um, and and many more. In addition, um special districts would obviously also need to study impacts. To um their services operations like school districts and uh the water district. So some questions that may come to mind are how is it, how would this impact the general plan update process? Which is on a separate schedule and is projected to be adopted early next year. Um, staff is recommending that we continue um to push on with the general plan update. The general plan provides policy guidance on many important topics. Including community design, vehicle bike and pedestrian circulation networks, open space and community facilities. Um, et cetera. And uh another factor influencing this recommendation is that the general plan is very old. It was last comprehensively updated in nineteen eighty and we really do need these modern policies. Um, which are crucial to guide development proposals between twenty twenty one and. A future um update if needed for to reflect the housing element requirements. Think another common question that comes up when jurisdictions are assigned a large allocation is what are the penalties? If um the number of assigned units are not built. And so there's there's um. Just a clarification that jurisdictions must plan for the units and ensure that policies do not discourage housing. However, if the market is not there and the housing units do not can get constructed, there's no penalty. But to be clear, if a jurisdiction fails to adopt a compliant housing element or does not properly implement. Policies, the jurisdiction could be sued by the state or another entity that could be a housing advocate. Advocacy group or it could even be the um, the owner of a property or the developer who wanted. To develop at a certain density that's compliant with the housing element. And also um, also importantly. Many state grants, especially transportation related grants. Um, require a certified housing element just to be considered for the grant money. So it's not like it's a point among um many other points to add up to. You know, potentially getting the grant, it's just like if you don't have a certified housing element, you do not get pass go on some of these grants. So um, as I mentioned earlier, the purpose of this item is to receive direction from the city council regarding preparation of a comment letter. On package five five three, staff provided several points to aid councils discussion, um including in no particular order. That Pacifica is pro affordable housing based on. You know, my years working with the council and the council's work plan goals and is planning for higher densities. Um, in appropriate numbers and locations for our community. The incorporated area of Pacifica is almost fifty percent. Open space leaving relatively limited infill capacity for development at densities needed to accommodate the um. The allocation, draft allocation. Um, many undeveloped private properties in Pacifica and um in unincorporated areas within the city sphere of influence. Are located in um high high fire threat areas. With Pacifica's limited transit service and highway capacity, the draft. Methodology would increase congestion and would not support greenhouse gas emission reduction targets. Our impacts to city and special district service capacities. Um, you know, we do want to encourage. The use of social equity factors as a part of the Rena methodology, but within the context of revisions that would allocate. Total units based on some of the factors I just mentioned or suggestions I just mentioned. And then the equity factors could be um a larger part of how the income allocation is um. Is implemented. And then lastly, um. I just wanted to ask, you know, maybe the council agrees with the methodology, I don't want to make any assumptions here. So if that is something that you guys. Agree with, we we perhaps don't need to send a letter or would send a different type of letter. Um, so finally, um, if the council uh provides direction to prepare a letter from Pacifica, that letter would. Come back on the consent calendar likely for council authorization on November twenty third. And um that concludes my presentation. I'm happy to try to answer questions. I did try to get A Bag staff to come talk to you guys, but. They uh, they weren't able to.
Tina, do you mind um explaining the the statement about the equity factors? I just, I'm not quite understanding it.
The one, the 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 point I made is a, is a suggestion, so. So um. One way to approach the equity factors is to use um. The cities, something closer to the city's growth projections in our general plan, so. Maybe it would be closer to fifty units a year, but that, the allocation that we're given. Because because of the reasons that we are um. A high resource area that perhaps the percentage of lower income could be higher than it would have been otherwise. So that it will skew from um, perhaps um market rate housing to more. Affordable housing.
I think if it's clear in the statement in the letter, that I would really appreciate that. So thank you for clarifying and congratulations, Tina.
Thank you.
Suvaras.
I don't see how we can build even close to that amount. Um, we don't have the transportation, we don't have jobs, um, we don't have builders jumping saying. I just, I want to build thousands of units there. Um, I just find the numbers outrageous. The same um Hillsborough had really similar numbers to us, they compared us to Hillsborough, which I thought was funny. But um, then and then on the other hand, Half Moon Bay, who has massive amounts of space, they had a very low allotment. Um, we don't have it. I mean, if unless you built five or six stories on every building, and I don't see that happening either. And the our one main area where we could build is the quarry, which is privately owned. And has failed the last several times in the vote and that's our largest area. And yet, we have to have a vote of the people to put one house there. So I just. Um, I I heard the presentation already and most of the cities jumped all over the guy presenting. And we kind of felt bad after because none of the cities were happy. Except maybe Brisbane, because they got almost exactly what they are building. So um, but none of the cities were happy at our City and County Association of Governments meeting when this was presented to us. It's just way, way high and I'm in favor of housing. So I'll stop there.
So is it possible to argue this? I mean, it's.
I think that's what Tina's asking for is what we are, what our direction is.
Yeah.
Um, in the comment letter, like, but. You know, I I have the same question if they, I mean, I feel like it's just this goalpost keep getting moved. You know, we understand the rules of the game to be um major transportation line. We don't have El Camino, we don't have fart, we don't have Caltrain and that's the reality and we don't have very good Cal. Um, um Sam trends. So that always seemed like a. You know, leveling factor and now it's thrown out. Now they're talking about driving your car. As long as you can get in the car and drive to a major job center within thirty minutes, you gotta build. How does this correlate with any sort of climate goals on state level? Did not the governor set an ambitious greenhouse gas reduction plan and and goal for twenty? Thirty, twenty forty, something like that? I I want to know how that aligns if we're supposed to all be driving cars now. Um, jobs, you know, you mentioned about jobs to housing ratio. I would venture for a city of our size, we're one of the smallest employers. Do we have a fit, a figure for that? That we could quote or, you know, is that not relevant or? It because the jobs are within thirty minutes of here to that. Um, the, you mentioned the amount of open space, is it really only fifty percent of dedicated open space that cannot be built? Um, I thought it was more, but when you consider the amount of. Our jurisdiction that, you know, if you take away the dedicated open space that cannot be built. And then you factor what percent of what we have left is in the coastal zone. Is there any kind of meth, you know, metric or? Way of presenting the numbers to help explain why. It's the case that we've built seventy nine units since twenty fifteen. Um, it's so unrealistic to expect us to build five hundred units a year. When we've built, how many, twenty? Um, a year on average over the last few years. So I don't know how to be helpful here, except I feel like I'm just complaining, but what, you know, what do you, what? What are your thoughts about?
So I wanted to, you know, I want to hear the council's thoughts and um, I think that the most. It's it's going to be, you know, I I don't know that we, they will change anything. I think it's a long shot. Um, but. There, the the only way we can maybe have a shot is if I, uh, you know, stat, you know, Kevin and I will take your comments. And to, we can't just say, here's our complaints, go fix it. I want to match up the concerns with. A um, an option, they've A Bag and the methodology committee studied tons of scenarios. And 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 they 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 settled on this one preferred methodology. And so to go back and say, here's our arguments for why, you know, option. Eight is better than option five is going to be, I think, more. I think better received at least because we're not just telling them to go back and redo their work, we're we're works, we're we're looking at all the work they did. And then we can maybe make a suggestion that's more aligned with our community's um, you know, growth plans in our general plan.
Um, I think we need to go back to the level service. The level of service at uh during commute times on Highway one, if I believe is a level service F. And since there is a stated goal to the reduced vehicle miles traveled. And we are entirely car dependent on commute times, I think that's something that needs to be addressed. I think it also needs to be addressed that sixty percent of the city limits of Pacifica. Is a is dedicated open space either by federal government, state government or county government. Parks and also watershed for the city of San Francisco. I think we also need to then go and figure out what percentage of our land. Is of is under the jurisdiction of the coastal commission. Which has an emphasis of visitor serving services and businesses not necessarily residential. And I think that, you know, we as a city cannot fight these higher level government authorities. Of um, the problem. And then I also think I can email you a link. From, there was a state agency, I believe it was the PUC that had us. All the way back here, southern end and the and up at the north end also. High, highly susceptible um fire areas. There was a state map that Verizon had in one of their community meetings. It was issued by a PUC, I think it was. And they said that this is a high volatile area. So I mean, I think we're going in there with the case of sixty percent of the land is out of our control. The coastal, the coastal zone is out of our control. You then have the uh vehicle miles traveled, the level of service F on Highway one. And then you bring in the, 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 actually bring in the instance of the apartment buildings. And ten houses being, you know, erosion causing and part of the trailer, the. Trailer park, I forget the name of that trailer park, the one across from the storage units. You always want to talk about, they lost a whole row of trailers. Um, uh, so I think we have natural barriers that prohibit us from. Doing that many units a year. Is that what you're looking for?
And then there's the schools, no one mentioned the schools.
The schools are under enrolled, they have capacity.
Nah, not for that many houses, Mike.
He just got a letter.
We just got a letter from, um, Pacifica School District about the, uh...
Developer fees.
Right, that they're raising the developer fees. And I looked at this, I think this went before J. Jefferson High School District Board already.
Yeah.
I'm gonna guess that the developer fees that even, that with raising it are not sufficient to build schools and to create enough facilities to accommodate growth at that level. I don't know how you project 500 homes. How many kids is that? There must be some kind of algorithms or formulas or estimates that are made. But, you know, what's the status of the state school? What is that authority, Mike? The state school construction department or something? When we would...
State architecture?
Pardon me?
The, the state architecture?
Yeah.
State architect?
Applies to it for money to build a school.
Right, but we're declining enrollment districts, so that won't work.
It's 1,900.
But that's 1,900 houses. It's not 1,900 kids.
It's 1,900 units of housing.
Times how, like, how do you figure out that, how many kids? That's what I don't know. Okay.
It's a higher pay grade than me.
We know the demographic study that the school district did before they did Measure O showed a projected growth. And Heather Olson has that study. Um, I don't know what our demographer studies showed when we did, um, district elections, if there was anything in there that is useful.
I just think they want to be like Jack Webb and Dragnet. Facts, ma'am, just the facts, you know?
Well, I mean, Tina, I think you have as good of, as anyone's experience with this. Um, and I don't feel qualified to be giving recommendations, but I think Mary's got a good point with the equity piece that, to clarify, that would be great. I think, you know, Sue and Mike, um, Suvarlas and Mike, you probably know more than anyone, given your, um, areas of expertise in housing, um, what we can and what we cannot do. So, I respect your opinion, your professional opinion there. Um, I think, um, Mayor Breton Beckmeyer, you've got a good point with the, um, school district and, uh, you know. Tina, I'll stand by you. I think that the recommendations for the comment letter is good, good enough. What else can we do?
Is there anything to add around infrastructure? Like wastewater and roads and, I mean, you have like the worst rating. What is our street index? Like terrible, but yet we're supposed to put how many more cars on the road? How many more people are those bad roads supposed to accom- accommodate? I don't know. I seriously think, you know, sewer infrastructure, how do we, how would we accommodate growth at that scale? And still, you know, meet our requirements for no overflows and all that, that we are also bound by and want to meet, of course. It's just something we're bound by. We are obviously in interest in maintaining a good status with wastewater. And then I had one other question, actually. Um, in terms of, I don't know what it's called, but the concept of when cities have passed regulations, laws, ordinances that restrict growth, such as height limitations, and, um, I understand that there have been lawsuits against cities where they've had restrictive policies. So, are there any? Is there exposure for us in those regards? As Sue Varlos mentioned, we have an ordinance that prohibits housing growth in the quarry without a vote of the people. But do we, you know, that's a fact. It's just the facts, ma'am. That's a fact. We have that, and we have a history, as Mike mentioned, of, you know, what the outcome of those votes has been. So, I don't know. Those are all part of what we have to contend with, I guess I should say, in trying to plan for housing.
Sure. I think on the, on the growth restrictions, you know, I think it's, it's probably, you know, every city who has a similar type of restriction, whether or not it's height limitations or something like the quarry, it's very, very fact-specific. And it won't necessarily be a problem if the housing element can show that the allocated units can be accommodated elsewhere. Um, I think, I think, um, a lot of cities have growth caps. You know, only so many building permits can be issued a year. I think those, those are, more frequently have trouble with HCD in the certification process. Um, but, you know, that's, that's not, um, that's not the issue that this community has and may not be the issue that some of the other communities that I'm hearing from in San Mateo County that have, you know, like growth, I'm not growth, sorry, height, height limitations and, um, and other limitations such as that.
And, and one thing, when I was at the presentation, I asked, I said, "We have 170 units that are being converted from apartments to, uh, low-income residential." And I asked if that would count towards our RENA numbers. And the man from 21 Elements said, "Oh, I totally doubt it, because there are already existing, so you can't count them, even though they're converting to, to, um, to affordable housing, which seems awful." That should be able to count towards our numbers, too.
But could you count them towards the subgroup in the RENA numbers? Right now, they're classified just regular income housing. But if they're being converted, could you count them as 180 towards the new allocation there?
I asked that question. He said it's not likely, because they're already existing units. Even though you're converting them, he didn't think they could count towards our numbers.
Well, maybe that can be a recommendation. That if you do that, especially in light of the equity considerations.
Yeah. It's important.
You know, you know, a factor of two in your math calculation for how many you can, I mean, you don't just get to count them in that category. You get a bonus for doing that or something. And I was also thinking about our, um, ADUs. Uh, and, and I think it's pretty impressive that we are out ahead of the state with our, um, ordinance. But, you know, that's probably irrelevant to them. Um, and in relative to, you know, other cities, probably the amount of ADUs we're producing isn't that high. Um, so, part of it, too, I was going to ask it, I mean, I know this sounds like kicking down the road, but the truth is, getting some of these policies and these, this sort of mindset to change, it takes time to implement these policies. And so, you know, from the state level, we're seeing the emphasis, you know, all the number of bills that have gone through the state that Scott Wiener's put forward, that, all these things. And it is inching forward. We're seeing some push in that regard, but it takes some time. And so, I wonder if there's a way to, um, stagger. In other words, is it a straight-line distribution? You're 2,000 units and you divide by eight, it's 500 a year on average. Or could you kind of stagger it in some way that a little less at the front end, more at the back end, on the presumption that as these policies take hold and as this growth starts to happen, it will be accelerating? I mean, I know it's a stretch, but I'm just saying that might be true. In fact, we didn't used to have ADUs. We didn't used to have that option. And we've already seen growth in the little bit of time we've had it, right?
The home-for-all meetings that we had were to bring people into the fold on the fact that housing needs to happen. And, and how many? We had four of those meetings, maybe five, to, um, like, start educating people on the importance of housing.
Mm-hmm.
And that was the purpose of those meetings, and we did do that ahead. But we got up to 79 from 63 that we had previously, so.
Mayor Martin, I've lost, uh, track, but did we do public comment yet?
No, we did not. We can do that now. We have, uh, one hand raised.
Suzanne Moore, here for speaker.
Hi, everyone. Suzanne Moore. I thought you, you had forgotten about public comments. But first of all, I just really, really appreciate the conversation you all have been having this evening. It's been helping this Pacifican gather, um, more information. I really appreciate the summary city staff made, and it helps us to better understand that the RENA six recommendations are really daunting. So, I was thinking about, uh, as you were commenting on things we want to put in our comment letters that are barriers, we might also want to include some things that we recognize are important, like that we have a desperate need for affordable housing here in Pacifica. And we can consider increasing density along transit corridors. And we can also consider ways to maybe incentivize ADUs so they could be earmarked for low-income Pacificans. And secondly, we can prioritize housing for essential workers. And, uh, now that term essential just covers so many people, teachers, healthcare providers, ancillary staff, childcare workers, service workers, others who contribute to the community's day-to-day functioning. If COVID's taught us anything, it's taught us that we're interdependent, and housing is necessary for health and well-being of, of the entire community. Um, thirdly, that transit, um, issue, you know, we really need to reduce dependency on automobiles if we're going to bring more people into our community. Maybe providing parking and easy access to BART and coming up with a plan for student transit to local schools so that there is not, um, big log jams as parents are taking kids to schools when we restart them. Um, fourth, we have to include that environmental safety with strong protection against building in areas prone to fire, landslides, and flooding. Um, when the city communicates to the Pacificans, we have to realize that we have to reach out to those who don't have access to Wi-Fi and computers. And we also have to choose the reasonable times that, that can accommodate families and, and not too late in the evening. Um, city communication must be extended to all Pacificans to ensure engagement, especially for neighborhoods which could be heavily impacted by housing changes. Council priority should include supportive affordable housing initiatives, having housing impact fees earmarked for affordable housing, an increase in the inclusionary housing recommendation and cessation of contractor waivers. We need contractors to build affordable housing, not escape with a fee. Since 2015, Pacifica's seen 70 new housing units. 81% of those were above the moderate-income level. We need low, very low, moderate-income housing. That need is acute, and we need to increase affordable housing without compromising environmental safety and protection. Pretty much the resiliency of our community is dependent upon accomplishing this task. Thanks for including me in your conversation.
Thanks, Suzanne. Okay, I don't see any more hands raised. So, I will close public comment. Come back to council.
Just, um, Tina, I was just looking at, I went to this map I saw from the PUC, and for Pacifica to expand beyond its city limits, I would say probably 90% of the land is either extreme, those words they used, was either extreme or elevated fire hazard, fire threat. That was as of January 2019.
Thank you.
How many, how many ADUs did we, were built out in those 79 units?
I have to look at the, give me a second to look at the...
Or just approximate. I mean, they're naturally affordable units.
I think last year it was somewhere in the teens that we built.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, yeah.
Last year, I just was thinking altogether in the 79 units, so.
Um, I think just last year was somewhere in the teens.
Okay, so, a percentage of those are ADUs?
Mm-hmm.
Um, Tina, if we were, I mean, I'm sure, especially up in Fairmont, because a lot of those houses were like built for second units, and they were probably built without permits. If we were to pass some sort of moratorium for permits, fees, and stuff, would those, would those additional units be counted towards RENA numbers?
Yeah, so if the city were to do some amnesty program where, you know, the goal was the, the, um, the minimum health and safety was, um, was what we were looking for, right? To make sure that those are, are safe housing units. And we issued a building permit for them to legalize them. We would count them when the building permit is issued. So, yes, a long way of saying, yes, we could count those units.
So, would, uh, just discussion amongst, then, council, is that a program we would be willing to look at, an amnesty program for ADUs or in-law units?
Yeah.
I mean, we could probably knock out 200 units. I'm guessing, you know?
Does the city lose, what does the city lose? Revenue?
Um, so we would have to talk about the, the, you know, how the program would be structured. Um, we could lose revenue if that's what the council wanted to do. Um, we could also typically, what we, what those amnesty programs would do were also provide, um, some leniency on some zoning requirements. So, if the ADU was built, you know, somewhere on the property, maybe it's too close to a property line, but, but all of the health and safety was okay, you know? So, we got, you know, good electrical in there, the plumbing was good. There was no, no additional fire hazard. We would allow that to stay because, you know, the benefit, the cost benefit of having that unit is, is more, and that we were confirming that all of the systems in the house were safe, and there wasn't going to be fire, et cetera.
Basically, what the city would be getting would be safer units. And we probably would be getting some sort of increase in property tax revenue because it'd be assessed then, right? But we would be getting numbers for our RENA, towards our RENA goals.
Right, and, and I mentioned, I mentioned zoning as an example, but more concerning to me is to make sure if there's, you know, we've seen, gone into houses where we've seen, um, the kind of like house that you're talking about where it was made for an ADU, but, but they didn't put any windows in bedrooms, right? So, there's no exiting. There's just really things that concern us from a building, health, and safety perspective that it's better, from my perspective, to get those safe for the people who are probably going to end up living there anyways. And so, we want them in better housing.
Mm-hmm. And can the assessment be deferred until the house is sold? It has to automatically be reassessed? I mean, it's not being re, you're not adding on or changing the footprint.
There used to be a program where senior citizens over, I think, 65 could actually defer their property taxes until the houses were sold. And the state would just write the check and then put liens on the property. There used to be that program. I don't know if it's still in existence or not. I could look it up.
I, I want to try to bring us back to focusing on the ABAG methodology. Um, these are all really great ideas, uh, about how to increase our units that count. But, um, just for the sake of this conversation, focus on other ideas about, comments about the ABAG methodology. I mean, we've heard a lot. To an extent, it sounds like, um, all of the points that were made in the staff report should be rolled into a letter, and there were some additions. Uh, should be rolled into a letter, and there were some additional points made? Currently? Um, that that we can work on, and like we said, the intention was to bring the the draft letter back to the council? On uh, at the next city council meeting consent calendar? Um, and 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 be able to submit that, I I believe the comment deadline is the twenty-fourth, the day after.
It's actually been moved to the twenty-seventh.
Okay, okay. Uh, so, you know, we have to bring it back at the at the next meeting if we're gonna do that. Um, I I also wanted to emphasize because um, and and Tina can clarify this, but? It's often said, you know, we we're not gonna hold this many units and just drawing the distinction between the city's role here? In terms of planning for? Where units could be built versus market forces that actually build the units, and I don't know, Tina, if you, that's a comment that comes up? A lot that cities say, well, we don't build the units, we just zone and plan for them, et cetera. Um, and and, you know, so that's what we would need to do in our housing element, but it's an important distinction. Because we can plan for a development, and there are some in town that we can? Talk about that have never been built, so?
Hey, so staff have what they need?
Yeah. Uh, so? I feel like I have what I need, yes.
Yeah, yeah, I think we we have a lot to work with, so it's been a good conversation.
Well, thank you very much.
All right, well, unless anyone has anything else, I think that uh, we will call it a night.
Okay.
In honor of our veterans?
Yep, let's adjourn in honor of our veterans? At nine fifty-four PM. Thank you, everyone.
Good night.
Everybody.